Am I feeding him too much or anything? He said no. Don't know.
It is eight o'clock. Let's stand and do the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public discussion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda and minutes dated August eighth.
So moved.
Carter, Jack, you second it?
No, not until I find out about the one item on here. I'm not sure that that's
I'll second.
Kyle, discussion? Which one, Jack?
Possible close session. I'm not sure that that should be out because we have a clarification order.
From who?
Were you talking to agenda?
I had a question from employees as possible.
Yeah.
We're talking about the minutes in last session.
Well, it's agenda.
It says agenda and.
Agenda and.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, I talked with Todd on how to word that before talking to Tammy on what to put on the agenda, so.
I know Carter had talked to somebody from ICIB and they had said that if there's a chance of going into close session, that you could put possible close session just so the public was aware that it was possible, so.
It still, it still has to be requested by the employee and it's being discussed, otherwise you can't go in.
Thanks for the clarification.
So I would entertain a motion to, I mean, we have a motion in a second. Are we ready for a vote? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next thing on the agenda is approve the claims and conservation claims. So everybody had a chance to look at them in your folder. Entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Plath, second by Carter. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Unanimous.
Awesome, thank you.
So does he sit in your lap then at night?
Pretty much own whatever territory I decided to lay down. But yes. Labyrinth.
What was his name?
Yeah, they're Max. Just make sure that you keep them entertained because they're so smart, they get bored. They will chew.
We got one of them. Chew. Monthly update of Veterans Affairs.
Alright.
Dan, you're up.
Okay, well, July was a pretty busy month. I had thirty-eight phone calls, fifty-two messages, forty-seven walk-ins, I had twenty scheduled appointments in the office and one scheduled out of the office. We did two transports and got four sets of hearing aids prepared. Currently tracking eleven-hundred-and-sixty-eight records in the system. I've got forty-five claims currently being processed by VA. Three that are marked ready for decision, thirteen under development that I'm currently working on. I've got one that's supplemental in appeal status and I was able to get another veteran enrolled in VA healthcare. Currently, our state training conference for the fall is scheduled on the ninth through the twelfth of October in Altoona at the Shriners Temple. I believe they call it Zaga Ying or something like that. But that's gonna be the location of the conference itself. Still working on the agenda, haven't seen what that's gonna look like yet. Currently, I'm registered and I'm working on getting four of the commissioners registered for their one day of training on Monday the ninth. There will be a director's board, a director's board meeting there on the evening of the ninth at four-thirty that I will also attend. And then I started programming myself for some computer-based training focusing primarily on claims work and within the specialty of development for Camp Lejeune claims, burn pits and airborne hazards claims, and then various changes to the program called VBMS that I use to track my federal claims because there's been a multitude of changes with that here recently. So those will be self-paced online in addition to my mandatory required classes I gotta do every year. Some of the activities that I did for outreach, I did attend the Sioux County and Palo Alto County Economic Development Breakfast back on the twenty-seventh and they had Speaker Debbie Durham present, very good speaker. I attended and participated in the color guard for the vets night at the races the next night on the twenty-seventh. Lot of fun there. At the time, had been planning to attend the Purple Heart Day in Wintmore for the Legion posts. I did actually attend that as well. And then this Thursday in Des Moines, Fort McCoy is providing its annual retiree appreciation conference. So I'm scheduled to attend that, having been retired for ten years. They're gonna present information on TRICARE benefits for retirees, the Department of Finance and Accounting, how the retiree pay works, gray area retirees, what that looks like. And those are folks that earned a retirement in the reserve or the guard, still at working age, but have not attained the age of sixty. So at age fifty-nine and a half, they have to apply for that benefit and there's a process to that, so hopefully they'll cover that a little bit more in depth. They're also gonna be looking at survivor benefit plan, which is basically an annuity for the surviving spouse of a military retiree, should that person pass before their spouse. So that's some of the things they're gonna cover on Thursday. Still waiting for the grant monies from the state, from the Department of Veterans Affairs. It's going kinda slow because they've had a number of personnel changes and how they're, how they're doing business, so it's just a matter of kinda waiting till they, they get around to getting those dispersed. Still focusing on the VA healthcare enrollment. I've got one waiting in the wings, possibly two that I'm currently working on. Still working on a claim for a veteran to get his bathroom updated with a shower under the HISA grant. He did not provide a good enough itemized estimate for the remodel, so in order to get that HISA grant approved by VA, gotta have a more detailed estimate. The other thing was, I just wanted to double check, I kinda, I did an update on my trip to Marshalltown to the vet's home. Did everybody get that? That I emailed it to you probably a couple of weeks ago. So it's kind of skinny on the whole trip there as far as going over there, but I will, like I said, I'll be gone Thursday and then Friday I'm gonna take a day of vacation because our post has bossy bingo and I'm on the kitchen committee and cooking the chickens and shucking the corn and all that, so I took a day off there to be able to do that. But August has been very busy as well and shaping up very nice. So I'll give you your questions, that's really all I've got.
Sounds good, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You guys have a good day.
You too.
Have a good weekend, Dan.
Discussion to approve the urban renewal report for FY twenty-two, twenty-three. Senior folder.
I did provide some extra information just
Yeah, I see that.
to help. I know Kyle had asked some questions about how, how it works, so I've just provided extra information to help with that, so.
Yeah, and we'll probably have to have some more conversations about it later on, but.
Yeah, it's all new to me. Maybe sometime maybe we should.
So Kyle and I talked about this previously, this Brooklyn renewal is good for ten years, which would make it up in this new year, twenty-four. So we're gonna have to talk to the attorney involved into how to renew that.
Sure.
So.
That had to do with the Gold Eagle on the train there.
The green thing, so.
Yep.
We get a tax break.
So isn't that the, when they initially come to you and say, hey, we wanna build this or do this as a business, they would get a, it's not a tax break or abatement, but it's a.
So what happens is when it started, they took the value of that property and froze it.
Right.
And so then, now they take, every year they take what that property is valued at.
Yep.
And the difference between that and the frozen value is what's available in TIP monies. So in this agreement, Gold Eagle gets fifty percent.
Yep.
The city of Titanca gets twenty-five and the county gets twenty-five.
Okay.
And then that money is used to, for the city for renewal.
Yep.
Gold Eagle to, you know, for their payments or whatever, and then the city for renewal as well, or the county for renewal as well. So that's it in a nutshell.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
And this will start back in twelve, right?
Twelve.
A while ago, okay.
Yeah, so it was quite a while back.
Yeah, but we didn't collect any, any monies until, what, thirteen, fourteen?
Sure.
We still have a bridge to build.
Yeah.
Yep.
But you might as well.
Yep. I need to approve the urban renewal report.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, unanimous. Did Phil, I didn't see Phil.
No, he's down at a conference in Des Moines. He said if we needed anything, we could call him, but.
I don't think we really need anything.
Yeah, we already had.
The email.
Right, yep.
Yep.
So I would entertain a motion to approve the purchase of the chassis for the EMS ambulance.
So moved.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Had it all last week?
Yeah, we had it last week and then the email clarification.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, unanimous. Donna, you gonna have anything to say about the handbook that was in our folder? Anything?
I think you guys wanted to review it.
Yeah, I read any comments or anything?
Doug did have some comments, I think he emailed.
Right.
Not sure if you guys saw that or not.
I don't remember Doug's email.
Maybe he just sent it to the department.
I didn't, I didn't remember. Were they issues that were?
I think Donna, I think I printed them out.
I think one of the questions was on the sexual, or sexual harassment training. We've included that on page seven. That's something that years ago was asked of us to, to offer that annually. Historically, they've not done that annually, talking about the social harassment training. Last year, we had our safety, first annual safety training and Todd did do a presentation. He's willing to do that, but then we also need to address other areas in the county of getting that training. I've looked at a couple of videos, I know those aren't ideal, but I think it's a topic that's sensitive enough that we wanna make sure it's being presented correctly.
So do you think any changes need to be made in the handbook about that, Donna, or, or as long as we know who's doing it, or is that?
I don't know, but there's any wording that needs to be changed in particular, just on that offering, unless somebody has some suggestions. I think in addition to that, there were some questions regarding notification and the procedures for if there were an incident, I think it's outlined and I guess I have to kinda look at that wording. If it's a member, employee member, or if it's somebody else that's in the harassment. It was page eight, number six.
Number three, sexual harassment stuff's on page three.
It's on page eight, yeah.
It's number nine, the bottom.
Number six is on page eight. As you're kind of gonna say, you have the, you've got so many things going on, the page numbers, I tried to do a table of contents, but until we get everything in there, it's gonna be really dicey.
Yeah, cuz I was looking at the Word version because that shows the changes, this one doesn't have stuff in red.
I did unmark the changes, people seem to have difficulty with the word of changes, so I've tried to not do it. If you wanna see that, that's fine, but.
Well, and I was trying to look back and forth between the two, so yeah.
And that's probably why we're, we're at this, when you go back and forth, it's, it's extremely challenging.
It, I mean, it's just a different page number for this, so it doesn't matter.
I guess my question is, more or less, words gonna make any difference?
Yeah, I think what, in the past, historically, what we've done is we've presented this and then we've had it reviewed by someone that is an expert in this. I think you could spend forever
Right.
on a handbook, but again, it comes back to department head education and a lot of our department heads unfortunately are out today. So they're not here. But I think it's a continual need to have a reminder, and I think I said this, I think to Tammy yesterday, the handbook is always present, but it seems like when there's a question, that's what we refer to and we're just not just familiar with it. For any, cuz it's a day-to-day, but it, it, it is important.
And I just thought of this one, Donna mentioned review, has this gone to our turnings?
No, no, but the original one was approved by the Green, so this one would go to the Green.
Historically, Renay has approved them all, this is not created.
I was thinking they probably shouldn't look at it.
Right, this is not created by employees, it's pretty much just a review, trying to tighten up some of the wording. Trying to make it flow, but again.
We, um, have you guys made any changes you wanted before we spent extra money sending it to you?
No, I think it is.
I thought it was fine the way it is.
But yeah.
Anybody have any comments on the handbook? If not, I think there's, don't see a need for a motion here today, do you?
I think we can approve it all at the end.
Yeah, I think today would be out of place.
Just kinda going over a section at a time, I think that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Donna. Appreciate it.
Do you want to just keep going to sections like this then, is that where?
That'd be fine. How many, how many twelve seconds are there?
There's six.
Six, right.
And the last one's pretty much a disclaimer.
Yep.
And some of them are right there.
Right, right, right.
Yep.
Okay.
Almost all is good.
Yeah, I mean, most of the changes were under one-six for job vacancies, to clarify the language there. Personnel files, one-seven was updated a little bit, but there wasn't a ton of changes in this section.
Okay, and we'll move on to the exit interview that was held on eight-three, twenty-three, evaluation of county engineer. Kyle, your name's on it, where do you want to start?
Doug, would you like this to go into full session or not?
You gotta tell him what you're going into full session for, or what?
The topic's on the agenda, I don't know what.
Need the exit interview or?
Before that question.
Or your valuation of the county engineer, which one?
It's all tied together.
I see no reason to go into close session.
Okay. Well, as I said last week, I was, I was the only one from the board personally there, Carter was on the phone. I guess.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Please.
Oh, we are talking about an exit interview, is that correct?
That is.
Who, who would be the employee?
Dustin Hanson.
Thank you.
I guess one of my first concerns is when the resignation was sent to us, it was sent to you and the whole board, I believe, and I replied all, asking for you to coordinate with us for our schedules. Never got a response. And then, and then the exit interview was scheduled. No one else from the board was there physically, as I already said, and you weren't even there, that's kinda concerning. I, I texted you asking where you were after it was over and you said you were on vacation. Could it have not been done another day, like the next day, and you're back?
Typically, we do the exit interviews on the last day of employment. So Lisa, our office manager, was present. I believe in the letter that I sent to Mr. Hanson and copied to the board supervisors. The exit interview will include discussion of leave balances, final county compensation, and your insurance coverages. So an exit interview isn't necessarily something I feel that I necessarily have to be there, a representative of the road department was there.
Well, in your office's own form, the exit interview has five questions here. One is, please explain your reason for leaving, what did you like most about your job? What did you like least about your job? How'd you feel about your pay and benefits in any comments? So would that not all pertain to the exit interview discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, there was, there was quite a few things that were said at that which I felt you should have been present for and I, I don't know where you want me to start. Have you reviewed Lisa's notes for what was said?
I have, and I've also discussed the exit interview with my office manager. She's on vacation right now, I would ask, I would have asked her to be present. I think Donna Nielsen was present as well, and I did ask Donna if she would be present for this discussion.
Well, I guess since you haven't requested to go into full session, I'll just start. Number one, please explain your reason for leaving, he specifically made.
You cannot say, talk about that employee. He's not here and if you say, and if you're gonna say anything about it, I'm, no, I'm leaving the room. That employee's not here, he did not request it, and if you're gonna.
Which employee, Dustin?
If you're gonna speak specifically about anything he commented on, I will, I'm gonna leave the room.
I guess.
You're gonna continue with that, then I'm gonna leave until you're done.
I guess I've talked to him a couple times, I don't, I have no concerns that he would be worried about what I said or what he said.
Well, I'm not gonna be part of any, any comments that you have wrote down there from him without his permission.
Why didn't you show up to it?
It's not my, it's not our job to do exit interviews. Donna Nielsen is the HR person, she needs to be there, and somebody from the, from the management of the office. We don't typically go in at the exit interviews. That's Donna Nielsen's job as an HR.
So it, so you're saying when you have an employee that specifically requests the board to be there, you're not gonna show up? Cuz I saw what his email said.
I, I, I don't, it's called the email. So if you wanna, if you're gonna talk about anything he said, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna be part of it. I'm gonna protect myself. So my question, are you gonna continue to, you're gonna go through that and speak specifically about what the employee said?
I think there's several things you all should be aware of from that exit interview.
My question, are you going to continue to, you're gonna speak specifically about comments that that employee made?
It does not have to be an open session.
The employee isn't here to request a closed session.
Doug Miller is here to request a closed session.
Employee has agreed.
I'm talking about the employee that's sitting in front of us.
Yeah, or you're not, you're gonna, you're gonna make, you're, you're about to read something about the state of the, of exit board.
Doug, you had a question?
Um, I just wanna make a point. I do not know in chapter twenty-one, five, C, where it states that somebody can go into closed session about an exit interview. So I think it should be clear. Twenty-one, five, I, I think is what you put on the, that's what's on there. That, you have that, and I'd, I'd like to know how you believe that I could ask for a closed session because of that topic. You keep on saying it, now please give me your legal opinion.
That section, that section says, "To evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation and that individual requests a closed session," is what is in the law.
Okay, but what are we talking about? Okay, but what are we talking about right now?
Your performance in regard to things that were said at the exit interview. Can easily fall under that section.
And in my job description. Do I answer to the transfer station manager?
You set up the exit interview.
Okay, go ahead.
So you want me to continue, should I open session, go?
Sure. Um, are you gonna, I'm gonna, are you gonna talk about something that that person needs to be here to. If that's the person that's gonna be hearsay?
No, it's not hearsay.
And that employee isn't gonna be here to, to back it up? And you're gonna, you might say something that he did, did or did say, so are you gonna, are you gonna make specific reference to what Dustin Hanson said?
I, that's what my notes are from.
I'm going to leave, I will leave the meeting until it's over.
I think I'm gonna leave when it, I don't think we can use hearsay.
I'm not gonna protect, I'm gonna protect myself from being, uh.
You wanna call Todd and just double check with him, I mean, I don't know how you have a review of an exit interview without. Uh, stating something the employee in the exit interview.
Employee isn't here.
I didn't plan that.
Yeah, probably come up before you start.
Yeah.
Hey, would you be able to come up to the boardroom? Um, we're past that, we are up to the item of possible closed session, and Jack and Roger have some questions about that. If you. Okay, thanks. Are you here for the handbook, Rod?
Yeah, we're gonna.
We're done, we're done.
Perfect, I got Drew trying to go on that, I'll send her upstairs, I'll go back up there.
See ya.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is he coming right away?
Said he would come up.
Brian, this one. On the contract. Since they're not correct, and Brian has everything.
Well, it's.
No, I, I'll go with you sometime.
I'm just, then one of those repeated here was indirect.
Yeah, it's for cause. For cause or without cause.
Do you wanna ask your question, or do you want me to sum it up?
Kyle was about to embark on an exit interview, and he's going to talk about what an ex-employee's said in his exit interview. And I don't think it's, it's appropriate, and because that employee's not here. What he says about that employee could damage that employee's reputation, I don't know what's, what he's gonna say, but it's gonna make specific remarks. That that employee gave him in an exit interview.
They're, they're not negative comments towards the employee that left. That's, it was his comments to us, not negative about himself. He's also states away by now, so.
I think an exit interview was considered private information that we put in his, in, in a folder not to be made, not to be made public.
The last part of the agenda item is evaluation of the Cusworth County Engineer. Because of things that were said at that exit interview, so Doug would be the one to request a closed session, not Dustin.
Well, I presume that the. I mean, the, what you have to determine is what the purpose of the agenda item is, is it to evaluate? The engineer, or is it to discuss the exit interview? If the exit interview is something that's going to be part of the evaluation. Then it's obviously pursuant to the code of Iowa, the, you know, the evaluation of a person's.
Twenty-one, five, twenty-one, five, I.
Performance is completely within the realm of a closed session.
And that's what I.
I don't, but I don't know what the agenda item's for, but the, looking at before I came up here, it did say evaluate, so if that's. What the intent of the agenda item is, then it can go in a closed session, Doug would have to review it, or would have to request it.
And I've asked him if he would like to go into closed session, and he said no.
Is this a, cuz, evaluation of the Cusworth County Engineer, or is this the evaluation of the engineer of the Cusworth County Transfer Station in landfill?
Yes. It's an evaluation of you.
Again, I'll ask the same question, cuz I wear different hats in Cusworth County. So is this a evaluation of the Cusworth County Engineer, which is the engineer for the secondary road department? Or is this an evaluation of the engineer for the transfer station in the Cusworth County landfill? Two separate funds, two total separate jobs?
I guess, two separate jobs, two separate funds, but it's the same individual, so I don't know that there's any difference.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so I think, you know, the reality is that whatever was discussed in the exit interview, as it pertains to that employee, since that employee is not here and not present, I don't. Believe that should be something that you get into, but if it has something to do with.
Okay, but there's gonna, he's gonna make statements that employee made. And we have no permission to repeat what he said, that he's about to.
I have no idea what the, what I don't, the exit interview.
I don't, I don't either, I don't either, but I don't, I think whatever that employee said in private shouldn't, is, is his.
The whole board was asked to be at this exit interview.
He's not here, he is not here to, to back up what's, what Kyle's about to say. I don't know what he's gonna say, you know, and, and I think that employee should be here to back up, uh, whatever Kyle's gonna say, or I never. Give permission to repeat what he said in private on his exit interview.
Guess could I ask maybe a clear question of, if, if the. Employee whose exit interview was being conducted. Made a comment regarding the performance of the Cusworth County Engineer to, for present. Is that an okay thing to state in a public session?
It depends on the comment, I mean, I wasn't present at this, I mean, if it was, you know, if it's something that is, um. Potentially, uh, defamatory or slanderous, I have no idea what was said during that ex- exit interview, I wasn't present.
I didn't then.
So I mean, I can't give you a blanket, a blanket yes or no on that, because I don't know what, what you're going to talk about.
I feel that an ex-employee should, should be here to publicly make those statements to the entire public. From something that Kyle wrote down.
He gave you the option of being there, you chose not to show up, that's not on him.
But you didn't have, but he's not here to make that a public statement, that, even if I was there, that was still a private meeting. Held between that, and, and that goes into his record, but it's not to be made, made of a public, a public document. That is a private document. And he has not given permission to make that public, or he should have been here, or she, to, to speak those words directly to the public.
So how do we get those comments, how do we talk about those comments as a board and with Cusworth County Engineers, since that's what those comments were for? Anytime the board meets, at majority, we have to notify the public it can be an open session.
Correct.
So, how do we go about discussing that?
Well, as I had, uh, indicated earlier, I believe, uh, to all of, uh, the board that, you know, if it's considered, uh. Ministerial, it's not subject to open meetings. Uh, ministerial is something where you do not have to exercise any discretion or judgment. Uh, if it was an exit interview, I, again, I can foresee that there is a possibility of that, um, coming up, it all depends on the exit interview. Uh, and how it was conducted, and what this, the, the topic of the conversation was. Um, but, um, again, not knowing what, uh, what the discussion was, and, and how it proceeded. You know, I can say that there is a. I would say even probability that that would be considered ministerial. Okay, that's not subject to, it's just the, uh, you know, the, the function of your job as an employer. Uh, you know, that's something that can probably be discussed, uh, without it being subject to an open meeting. If that's the, the purpose, I don't know, I mean, uh, there, there's two, there were two things on that, uh, agenda item that I saw. Before I came up, that, um, you know, seemed like there's two different, two different. Uh, parts of that, so looking at it from the standpoint of closed session and evaluation is clearly without any question. Uh, subject to potential closed meetings, as long as the person being evaluated requests it. So now you go to the question, well, you know, someone said this during a, an exit interview, I have no idea what that is, again, I go back to, I don't know. You know, I, I think you probably should, to a certain extent, tread lightly in that, um, if it's. A subject of evaluation that you want to discuss, uh, based upon information gleaned without going into, um. What was actually said, or, you know, even potentially the context of what was said, uh, I think that that's, that's fine. But I think that there's, you know, a few that were in the exit interview, and a few that were not. Um, you know, maybe that's something that, uh, the actual evaluation based upon that information should be. Done when all members of the board are apprised of what. What the exit interview revealed, if anything. I don't know, I don't know what, what else I can say, because I can't give you any blanket, um, rule on that, because, you know, I'm, I'm somewhat in the dark, but that's basically the law. You know, it says.
And, and I know I did ask you about the exit interview, if that had to be an agenda thing for us all to attend to, and you had said the ministerial part, and. And I was the only one.
I, I didn't say exactly that, well, I said, but I can't tell you, you know, that every exit interview is going to be considered ministerial.
Well, you already said.
It comes down to whether you're exercising your discretion, or, 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 uh, uh, your depth of honor, your, your, uh, decision-making ability, that's, that's, that's open meetings right there. But if it's just a matter of conducting an exit interview where there is no use of judgment, um, uh, or discretion. Then in that situation, it would be considered ministerial, that's the definition of ministerial. You know, that's, that's the, the, the part that the public needs to know, is what you're basing your decisions on, what you're making your judgment calls on. You know, to exercise your job as an employer, probably most of the time, it's going to be ministerial.
Well, again, I think if that employee had a, had a beef with Doug.
Okay.
It should be, he should, that person should be here and make it a public statement, not something that somebody wrote down in a private meeting.
Yeah, you don't want to air anything that's just based upon, uh, a potential.
That person being, obviously Doug would have a chance to defend himself. Without that person being here to confront Doug directly, Doug is, he's in, he, he has no chance to, uh, confront that individual and, and defend himself.
I, I think that's a.
Exit interview, but, um, but, so. I guess moving forward. So let's just say I went and talked to Jack and said, Jack, here's what was talked about in the exit interview, that's what I want you to be aware of. But I can't go and then talk to Kyle, and then talk to Roger, and then talk to Josh, about, hey, here's what was said in the exit interview, and what I think. Or even if not what I think, just here's what was said in the exit interview. So how do we communicate as a board to discuss, or, or do we just not discuss it, I mean?
No, that's not what I'm saying, if it's, if it's, uh, part of that exit, exit interview, and it's, um, uh. Something that is, uh, that was revealed, I mean, you can, um, you can share that information with other members of the board. But the reality is that you're, you're dangerously close to now moving into an open meetings issue, dealing with an evaluation. An exit interview, you know, you're just receiving information, right, maybe asking questions to clarify. And it's not something that, you know, you're making a determination of a person's employment based upon that information, that person's already gone. They've already resigned, or, or, or whatever. And during that interview, you're receiving information presumably to better, you know, the, the employment situation for the rest of the employees. Ministerial in most situations, um, but. Moving that to evaluation, now if you're making determinations based upon that information, now you're using that. To use your discretion and judgment individually. As I mentioned, if it's a. You know, and, and I would like to further my thoughts on this, but where I'm going with it is. The sharing of information is not necessarily a violation of open meetings. The, um. Or receiving information, I should say, sharing, receiving. But that information to be used in a purpose that is part of judgment discretion is where you're. Is where you're running into the problem, your scenario there, and how do you share that information?
Isn't closed session the only option to really do that?
Or having the employee send us a letter, s- uh, stating that I, I give my permission to, to, uh, to give.
But that would be, that would be going, uh, to, you know, just shooting from the hip here, that would be going further than what most people do, I mean, when you do an exit interview. You're, you're acting in that situation as an employer, right? I, I mean, you're receiving information, I, I would say that probably many times, an employee who's leaving. Just kinda shares some thoughts that they have, some which are maybe exaggerated or embellished, because they're upset at whoever they're sharing that information about. Um, and so you have to be careful and cautious in that regard, but it doesn't mean that you can't act upon it and try and find, um. You know, clearer understanding of what is actually going on. Which is what an evaluation is, which is part of what you do and part of open meetings. But, you know, so. Recognizing that whoever is leaving employment may have a grudge and an axe to grind. Okay. That's where, you know, it, it, it may not be one hundred percent accurate, it may not be something that is, um. You know, anything more than, um, you know, it's my final blow before I leave. May or may not, I don't know, that's where your process as the, the evaluation, or your process as the employer and the evaluator in that situation is going. in that situation is going to have to get to the root cause of it. And if that root cause of it is something that can be accomplished through an evaluation, then yeah, certainly that is, but it doesn't necessarily have to, well, this is what so-and-so said. You know? You can do it in a way that wouldn't necessarily say exactly, or even through any way, shape, or form, the, what the individual said. This is just what you need to find out. I think that's something that's common to most employers, when they do exit interviews. You know, okay, well, this was a problem. How can I address it? How can I resolve it? What do I need to do to change that, so it's not something that I hear again in an exit interview?
Well, I guess if we're going to, if we proceed with this, I would want you to stay-
Well, I'm not going to stay in it, because I don't think that's something that-
Well, because if any question that, that a board member asked, I would, I would like to know whether it's, whether it's an appropriate question, or it's going outside of the bounds of ministerial. Without, without you being, hearing the question-
Well, my suggestion would be this, Jack, is that, you know, you're operating off information that is unknown to you at this point in time. So am I. All right? If it's a matter of being able to, and I can find that out for you, it's never happened before, which not in my experience, but, you know, if it's something that, you know, the board needs to get together to share this exit interview information, so that you're all aware of it, then you probably should do that, if you can. I'm not saying that you necessarily can as a board sitting, you know, with a majority of more. That's something that, you know, I'd like to, to do a little bit of digging on, to make sure that that's fine. I believe it's going to be considered ministerial, because it has nothing to do with, with your judgment, but it's going to potentially affect what you're going to do in your evaluation.
So, I have one question. We have a employee that wasn't happy and retired, did an exit interview. And the second half of this is evaluate Cassuth County engineer. How can we evaluate a Cassuth County engineer on one person's exit interview? There's a lot more to the Cassuth County engineer than an exit interview given by an employee that was disgruntled. That's my point.
There's no limit on the number of evaluations we can do.
Well, to answer your question, I mean, anytime you, let's just take it out of the context of Cassuth County. Okay, let's say A B C D Corporation. Okay, they receive, or they have someone who leaves employment. Okay, the corporation heads to an exit interview. They find that there's a conflict between this employee and someone else. Regardless, maybe it's a supervisor of the corporation, maybe it's just another employee. Is the corporation going to just let that go? And continue to potentially fester? My belief is, no. They're going to bring the person in who potentially has this issue, and discuss it with them to try and correct it. I think that's what would be at least the best and appropriate course of action, if that's the case. Again, I don't know. All right? So, in that situation, as far as, you know, the, the employer, the hypothetical employer, you know, would be the same here. I mean, it's, it's whether or not the evaluation happens right now, I don't know. It depends on what the information is. But, you know, I don't think that that's something that is out of the capable-
I, I would agree with you, but, but in that case, that person needs to come in here in a public meeting, and, and make those statements publicly, or come in here and ask for a closed session.
He's not a employee.
Why, why would that be a requirement of him? He already gave his, his review to us as a company.
My concern with that, Jack, is, I mean, then why do an exit interview?
Exactly.
I mean, why would you do an exit interview if you don't want to use the information you received from the exit interview to hopefully better the employment situation of the people in Cassuth County? Or at least in the county government. I mean, that's, that's why you do exit interviews, right? You find out, okay, what's going on? What's good? What's bad? Whatever's bad? And, you know, try and improve the good, to make it even better. What's bad? Try and, and correct it. I mean, I think that's the whole purpose of an exit interview. So, otherwise, you know, then, then don't do them. I mean, because if it's not going to create any, any activity by the employment, by the employer to better the situation, then why do you do them?
But you can, you can use it, but Donna could go to Doug, if it was this exit interview-
But Donna's not Doug's employer.
No, she's, she is, and she could, she has the right to go to Doug and say, "I had, you know, your employee said this, and this, and this." Maybe you need to work on your management style, or you need to do some hand remains with.
Just before we continue further, do the two of you have any desire to hear what was said in the exit interview at all? And if not, then that's the whole point of sharing as a board. And we might as well just move on to the next agenda item, because otherwise we're wasting Todd's time too.
We have a trial going on right now, so I'm kind of limited in time. I mean, I, okay. I mean, to, to, to build off what Supervisor Nath is saying, I mean, you will be evaluating, I assume Doug, as part of the contractual obligations, you know, during the course of budget workshops were evaluated, I mean, you know, through conversation if necessary, but the, the, the question is, is it something that has to be acted on today? And that's not something I can answer, because I don't know what was discussed. But, you know, it's, I think that the reality is, and that's a very fair question that Supervisor Nath said, I mean, if you want to know, my intent then would be to find out how that information can be shared before it's shared, so that you're not violating the, the open meetings law. And then, if that's the case, we can address step one, because, you know, some of the board members are unaware of that information. Then the second thing is, okay, how do you go through the evaluation process? And what should you do as far as notice to the public? And notice to Doug? Because Doug's sitting here, he's got, like you mentioned, two hats that he was wearing. You know, what, what hat is he going to have to, to be evaluated on? I don't, you know, I don't know if that's necessarily determinative of, 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 you know, the notice. I mean, it's, you know, I wear a lot of hats too, but the, the reality is, I'm the Cassuth County Attorney that covers a lot of different areas that the county government has. So, I don't know. I mean, that's, some direction you find. I don't know if you can share that. If you can, I'll let you know. And how you go about doing it? If everybody wants to know what was said. So you kind of have, everybody has an understanding of what's going to be brought up during the evaluation. And then if you want to evaluate Doug, then you put it on the agenda, much the same as what you did, and it is a possible closed session. It's up to Doug to want to request that. You know, I, I know from, from where I sit, I mean, I, we rarely discuss in any type of a situation, venue or forum, the exact words of what was said. But the cause and reason for the action is something that's fully capable of being discussed. Okay? It's not, this person said this. That could be defamatory. All right? But, hey, you know, we have some concerns about this, if you do. How can we make it better? What can we do? What's the root of it? What can we do to make it better? Yeah, that's your purpose. Right? It's not to, it's not to degrade anybody. It's to try and make the county better. That's, that's what all, what, that's what all of our purpose is. I mean, it's, how can we do things to make the county better? So you tell me what you want me to do.
Do you want to discuss it, or do you want to just go on to the next agenda item, then we can figure out how to share information?
I know. Some of what happened in the exit interviews, so. But I wasn't there. So, Jack, you want?
Yeah, I guess clarification, how to, how to share that information, I guess.
Okay, so then I will look up and determine a plan for you guys, if it's possible to do it. I'm not trying, and this isn't something that's going to be done for everybody's information, to some way subvert the rules of open meeting. Ministerial actions are not open meetings. If it is a ministerial action, I will let you know. If it's not, if it has to be something that is consistent with the rules, then that's what we'll follow. But, that's the first goal then, to let you know. So you can, if it's possible, share with each other the information obtained from the exit interview. After that, then it's up to you, how you want to use that information. You're the employer. At that point, it's an open meeting. I know that. All right? If you're in an open meeting, and you're evaluating the performance of an individual who's with the, the county government, it is an open meeting and will be discussed and open unless the person who's being evaluated wants to go into a closed session. Okay? And that you have to live with. Right? But the first thing is to determine whether or not that information can be shared among all of the supervisors in a way that doesn't violate open meetings.
So, Carter, would it be fair to say that you want to share some of that information? Kyle, you want to share some of it?
Correct.
Then we'll put it on the agenda item for a future board meeting, and we'll get on with today's meeting, I think would be the appropriate thing, unless you think it's not.
Well, put what on the agenda? I mean, I wouldn't even put it- I mean, my point is, is that if it has to go on, on the agenda items based upon my research, then, then we'll put it on at that point.
Yeah. I'd say we wait for Todd's guidance on that specifically.
And I'll get to that. Like I said, we have a trial going on this week, but, you know, I should be able to get something to you by the end of the week, at first part of the month.
There is no hurry on this side.
I understand. But I think, you know, it's, just to finish with that, you know, that's why we do exit interviews, to try and make things better, so I don't think it should be something that's potentially delayed indefinitely, so.
Yep. Good.
Thank you.
The next thing on the agenda is appoint a manager for the landfill and transfer station. We had a meeting last week.
My, I'd say just my primary concern would be in our handbook that we just went over this morning. Section 1.6 says it is the county's policy to fill job vacancies with the most qualified person possible. It is the county's pos, policy to advertise position openings on the county website, and post it in the courthouse on the second floor for 10 days. Cassuth County reserves the right to use other recruiting sources to fill open positions at their discretion. And application forms are available.
That, that is the version with the potential changes. We looked at the current version that's in effect, and old version, so to speak. Yeah, it doesn't show the changes on there. It has, it is, it is county's policy to fill job vacancies with the most qualified person possible. It is the county's policy to advertise position openings. And then in red, strike through is in a local newspaper when necessary. Red additions, it's on the county website and posted in the courthouse on the second floor for 10 days. And the right to use other recruiting sources as well. And then, the old second paragraph is, whenever a non-deputy position becomes available, a notice of such opening will be posted in the courthouse on the second floor bulletin at least 10, 10 calendar days before the deadline for filling the position. Notice will contain the position title, brief job description, and minimum hiring specifications. And then the other paragraph that's in there has no changes.
So was this, was this procedure in our policy followed or necessary for the appointment of a manager prior to us being able to do that?
It's just like a, just like a deputy, and I think you just said something about a non-deputy position.
This is the manager of the transfer station, a deputy?
Man, I would say that it's very similar.
Deputy.
And who, who determines, who, who will be determining the most qualified person?
Well, you will be. But, but I'm just, I'm asking if, if we need to-
I did not advertise it, Carter, you know that.
Okay.
I was given the-
I'm saying, do we need to before appointment?
I was given the resignation two weeks prior to the resignation date.
Yep.
You, you know it.
I know that, okay. I'm saying, that's still within the 10, the 10 days. Are we supposed to follow that, or?
I don't know. It's a manager position. I have advertised for the other positions at the transfer station.
Deputies are under elected officials.
So I, I'm asking, I don't know that our, our county policy is fairly clear. Do we need to do that prior to appointment?
Will, will the board allow me to do the job? Who is the department head at the transfer station?
Well, you are the department head.
So will the board, if I put the advertisement up, will the board allow me to do this?
Yeah, that's what would seem appropriate. If that, if that is our process of hiring an employee.
We're promoting an employee.
I, I don't know what the difference is when a, when a deputy in an elected official's office retires, resigns. Evidently, that department head, that elected official can, can appoint a deputy to, a deputy acts in the absence of the elected official to do their work.
I don't think the board supervisors can tell an elected official-
No, I, no, that's not what I'm saying. I, I'm saying this is, this is so similar. I mean, this is a-
But, appointing a deputy would be under the authority of that elected official, by the power vested in them from the voters.
So we have it on the agenda to appoint a manager for the Cassuth County landfill.
And I did not put this on the agenda, by the way.
Yeah. So we, we are not going to do it, or are we going to do it?
It was from the discussion last week.
It was clear from last week's discussion, and I did not put this on the agenda.
He has a person he feels is qualified to do it.
That's fine.
And, and then, and he said he recommends that appointment? That we should act on that, and we'll advertise him for, for a replacement for that individual who was assistant manager.
He's not assistant manager now, anyway.
I'm just asking why, why we didn't follow our county's policy in, in hiring an employee into a new position. That's all.
So-
We did have ample time. You mean, like, 10, 10 days? How, how soon? 10 days is within two weeks. To be within the-
Where do I, where do I have to, again, read that? Where does it have to be advertised at?
Section 1.6?
Yeah, read it. What all, what all does it have to be advertised? According to our new, our handbook right now?
In the local newspaper.
Okay, how long does it take to get into the local newspaper?
I believe you have to get in by Tuesday noon, Wednesday noon?
Monday. Monday.
Monday at noon.
Monday.
And the email was sent to us for signing on-
Local newspaper, I think, that if you look at Sway City-
Thursday, I believe.
Sway City and Bancroft, you'll see that it was, it's a Friday.
Friday, yeah.
Okay. The email was sent to us on Thursday.
Yeah. So, I'm supposed to just drop everything and get that going, the very- That's fine. We'll get it done.
I guess there's other things I would, I would say, but they kind of tie in with the discussion we had before, so.
Well, there's always two sides to a story.
Well, I, I'm not-
I'm aware of that.
This has nothing to do with the, any individual being appointed. This is just our, our county's policy, and to handle it.
Well, again, Doug has the authority to- Well, again, Doug has the authority to, to promote an employee and uh, and hire or, I mean, bring somebody in off the street that has, that has no knowledge of the transfer station, yet that he has employees who knows how to run it. And he, Doug thinks he's, feels he's qualified or she's qualified, that he should be allowed to appoint that person and, and then he advertises for the one, for a replacement for the person that he promoted.
Based on the handbook, which was last fully approved before Carter and I were both on the board, that is not the case, Jack.
I would, I would be voting to approve a position that was against our county policy. I mean, that's, that's how I see it.
And a policy that we did not create either.
So you're going to continue to have row employees substitute at the transfer station until we do something?
I would make a motion to table this until proper posting has been completed to comply with our county policy.
I have a motion last second. Do I have a second?
I would second.
Okay, and Carter, discussion? Seeing no discussion, do a roll call vote.
Clap?
No.
Nah?
Yes.
Sticker?
Yes.
Jerks?
No. Motion's timey.
Motion fails, two to two.
Yep.
Well.
We'll move on to the next thing on the agenda.
Decision made, so this is a move on.
Yep, we'll have to move on. Decision to approve SCS engineer proposal to complete landfill and transfer station annual environmental compliance work. Doug, you have any comments before we make a motion to approve?
Well, I did look at the cost, uh, MRR engineering have been uh, charging us for the last two years. I did provide that to the board supervisors. As you can see in the printouts, the totals that were approved were uh, twenty-four thousand, twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-one and uh, almost forty thousand in twenty-twenty-two. Uh, did not get anything for calendar year twenty-twenty-three. The uh, proposal is for the remainder of twenty-twenty-three, which would be fall work, environmental work. The twenty-twenty-four activities, uh, twenty-six thousand seven hundred ten, twenty-five activities, twenty-six eight fifty-five, and twenty-six is that same, twenty-six eight fifty-five. They also have um, an agreement to provide professional services that would be on call. So they define their services similar to what we're charged from MRR. Uh, so we do have a list of if that is happening and what their costs are. Um, I will, I think that the SCS very reputable around the state of Iowa and the nation for uh, environmental uh, with landfill operations are very familiar with Kasut County's landfill. Uh, a lot of their employees were employed by a company called Barker Lamar back in uh, two, the early two thousands. Uh, Nathan Ord has done our uh, our plans for uh, for different things. They're familiar with our landfill, they're familiar with our transfer station. And I would recommend that the board would approve uh, their proposals and further to authorize chair to sign the proposals.
Do I have a motion to approve the engineering front, SCS? Carter? I'll second your motion, Carter. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried unanimously.
There you go. I'll get that all filled out there, Roger, thank you.
We have some construction in the rideaway?
Yes, we do have a few I have to take care of, construction in the rideaway. The first is we do have plans for two federally funded bridge projects. We're planning to let on November twenty-one of twenty-twenty-three. These will be let down at the Department of Transportation. Uh, one is located south of Titanca on the pavement, the safe pavement where the bridge is being constructed. And then the other one is P thirty uh, south of Hobarton on the boat Hobarton Row. So if the board would sign those plans, I'd appreciate it. We'll get them sent to the Department of Transportation uh, so they can be let.
Everybody okay with signing?
Yeah. The other one is we did, a contractor moved on yesterday to a bridge uh, in Seneca Township looking on the north line of section eleven of uh, Seneca Township. So I'd like the board to act on a resolution to uh, close that road for construction.
I'd make a motion to close the road.
Resolution number is oh eight fifteen twenty-three oh one. And that will be to close the road for a bridge. Mr. Sticker makes a motion. Do I have a second? Jack seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, do a roll call vote, please?
Clap?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes.
Sticker?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
Okay, Tammy and Roger, if you will sign that, please. Thank you. Thank you. And then the last bit of construction of the road right away down to the east of West Ben. Uh, the Apostolic Church is, my understanding, they are putting in a sump pump in their basement to uh, lower the water table. Uh, if you're familiar with that area, they want to go, they want to drain that water to the south. And there really is no road ditch, uh, very little drainage there. So they have uh, discussed with Wayne Graham to outlet that on his property. Go under the road and outlet on his property into the road ditch. Uh, we have been visiting with the Apostolic Church. We're trying to put together some sort of an agreement. Uh, Kasut County would allow this work to be completed. Uh, we're not responsible to provide drainage, we're not responsible for the material. If, if there would be a failure, we're not responsible for any damage to the outlet. Um, we need to have Mr. Graham and the Apostolic Church both sign uh, that agreement as well as Kasut County. Uh, we're very close to getting that agreement taken care of and signed. But we don't have it today. They want to do the work, they may want to do the work uh, this weekend. So if uh, they were to have a contractor do this work, is the board concerned about anything there if I would give them verbal permission to do that? And take, as long as they, as long as we have the agreement signed and in hand, just not approved by the board supervisors?
As long as we have, as long as we have the paperwork taken care of, we're fine with it.
Very good. That's all the construction of the road right away?
Thank you, Doug. Do you want to do uh, discussions in boards and committee reports?
We still have discussion with the engineer.
Yeah. Any more discussion, Doug?
Uh, just resurfacing projects are uh, are going right now. They completed the intermediate surface on the Lots Creek Road. Um, got it ringed out yesterday, but they are working on that final lift today. So by the end of this week, uh, the resurfacing on that road should be complete. They will be moving on to the road south of Lone Rock. Uh, that road uh, ends, it does not have a pavement to drive through. We are going to have them drive on a gravel road at the end of that three miles, go east over to the Good Hope Road. We will be applying dust control in front of the residences there. And there's one intersection, we do need to put up a temporary stop sign, uh, trying to make sure that uh, southbound traffic stops. It is aware, we're trying to put up some warning signs for, for that, that people are hauling there. Uh, northbound, there is a stop sign already. But we are getting ready for that next uh, step in that resurf- resurfacing. Uh, the bridge project right south of Titanca, the south substructures are complete and now they are driving through pure pile bent. And that is being jetted as well. They needed to jet those piles to get through the level, the rock uh, level there. Uh, the Irvington Bridge, they had some breakdowns on their paper last week. They did not get back up here to finish the patching on that. So that, we're waiting and continuing to work with laptop service. Uh, they started removal on that bridge in uh, Seneca Township. Today, they're hoping uh, the end of next week they'll be completed. The Albona Airport is going to begin construction September five. That road will be closed September eleventh. And the bridge replacement project south of Fenton for the Department of Transportation. All concrete is poured, so now they are backfilling. And then they'll be uh, getting that road uh, poured as well. We do have four truck chassis up at uh, Lake Crystal, Minnesota. They dump boxes and snow removal added on to those. I'm working on the annual report and then also some tied at six uh, work. Uh, future expenses. We do have uh, the overhead doors at the Laverne shop were in very poor condition. They're actually the original doors from nineteen eighty-seven, I believe is when that was built, maybe nineteen eighty-eight. So I did sign a purchase order to uh, to get new doors installed there. Got the open positions, another open position now too, um, makes five. And other than that, that's all that I have right now.
Anything else for Doug?
Um, Doug for P thirty, south of Sway City, like to the Bancroft-Seneca Road. Um, do you have a plan or anything for those holes that developed this winter, the state of that road? I know there's some others similar to it, but.
There's other roads that are similar to it and we, um, right now budget, I tidy. Um, I don't know, uh, without doing a full uh, resurfacing, I don't know what the solution would be for maintenance.
So that's what it would, you believe that's what it would take is full resurfacing project?
Yeah, the, some of that seal coat. And actually, I think it's the uh, slurry leveling that is underneath the seal coat that came under, uh, due to some traffic and snow removal, so. But uh, slurry, uh, it'd be very, very expensive to go up and slurry level that. Um, it's mainly in the center line what I saw. Um, it's not affecting the driving lanes as the person's passed.
Will that affect the condition of the rest of the road as we go through freeze thaw cycles this winter?
I, I don't think that it will. I don't think it'll get worse, we'll, we'll continue to monitor.
Okay.
Nothing else, thank you, Doug.
Um, I guess one thing. I I don't know if there, if, if I'm going to advertise for a position at the transfer station for a manager, um, I don't know if the board even needs to approve of it. If I would just advertise and hire a person, just tell you who I hire, is that satisfactory?
I think we should still approve it.
Or an employer, manager?
You're the one, you appoint Doug to run the transfer station.
Yeah, I guess that's, I mean, if you, if you want somebody else to
Follow the.
Be the department head for the transfer station, go ahead and tell me, that's fine.
No, that, follow the county handbook, that's fine.
Alright, thank you.
You want to finish our committee reports and time with the auditor or go jump into drainage?
Oh, yeah.
Which would you rather do? We're going to take a break, one way or the other.
Let's.
We could do that.
Just do auditor and board reports and that out of it, quick.
Did you have any reports, Jack?
No, we had a board, helping me, my mistake, and uh, that would be Monday.
Kurt?
No, well, I did uh, an educational session on, on TIP districts. Was learning about them, but other than that, no.
I'm never known.
Well, we did, I did have a call, we had words from the county, they asked me to check with Roger. So why would I? Now, I was sending in more prisoners over here to our jail. And uh, um, Roger looked into it and uh, sent me, let me just forward on to uh, Q4. Basically, it had to do with, um, well, I'll, I'll forward the email to you guys so you can read it.
Carter?
That's all, all yeah.
Kai?
I had some Beaverdale delivered too.
Oh, Beaverdale, eh?
No.
I have C I J D C this Friday, so.
I did go out to the dock one day and sit there for about an hour and watch how it was running. And I'll make my report when we talk about the rest of it. It's interesting, I've never sat out there before and just observed.
Okay, so next week on the twenty-second, we have DD ninety lap one tile railroad crossing public hearing at ten o'clock. So far, that's all we have on the agenda for next Tuesday. Sure, it will fill up. Um, I also wanted to talk to you about North Iowa Area Council of Governments. Um, when they sent us their figures last December, it was only an estimated amount. So the amount that we budgeted is not the same as the amount that they have approved. Um, because they did not come out with that number until January thirty-first. So, um, it's going to change um, a little bit. So this is. This is.
It's too positive.
Yeah, it's, it's actually looks like it's gonna be, the, the top amount is higher, the bottom amount is lower. So I didn't know if you wanted it on the agenda to approve, that we'll have to do a, add it to a budget amendment. But do you want to have approved it added to an amendment, add that amendment also, or do you just want to add it to the budget amendment?
I think we can, it's not negative to do that, it's balanced.
Well, here it is, that top number is higher, it, it's both of these that are, yeah, it's the top one that's gonna be higher.
Is the net higher or lower?
The net's higher, correct.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll have to do a budget amendment.
So I guess my question is, do you want it approved and then approved at the budget amendment, or do you just want to add it to the budget amendment?
Well, I think we can just do it in the budget amendment, because we're not gonna change anything until we do the budget amendment. Rest of the board comfortable with that?
Can you just send the documents out to us so we can look at them, or?
Yeah.
I'll come look at them after we meet in two.
Yep, I can do that. And then the other thing is, um, our county farm lease expires in twenty twenty-three. So if you are going to not extend it, if you're gonna
Terminate.
Yes, we need to do that by September first, so we need to know what your intentions are.
Probably should terminate it just to have discussions and set new, new rates and everything.
Okay, so.
And, and then it goes out to
Farm, oh okay.
Goes into the paper to be published and open for bids and stuff. I think that's typically, I think that's what we did last time.
Yep, go ahead with that, okay.
Terminate it.
Okay, then that's on the head.
And then you're gonna have to advertise it?
Yep.
But that has to be an agenda item, so we can put that on the agenda for anytime.
That's on the head.
Anything else? If not, we're gonna take a fifteen minute break before we start drainage and get Marge in here.
Did you read the, you know? He spread it all by his ten percent. There's something that he says, you know? They did, of course, my last slide.
I think sixteen five and ten twenty-two, it don't show. They're cooked back or.
I need to get some. How are you doing?
My chance.
Okay, what's your name? Marcia. Thanks for joining us today. I don't. Jim, okay, I've heard her now. I think I have with you.
I'm gonna say hi, it's too long.
You remember me?
I remember, but I can't put names.
Rick Power. Your father-in-law walked you down the aisle, right?
Oh, Mr. Brown.
Yeah.
I know your face like.
June, my wife still.
I'm in Jordan.
How long you been married? She just wanted two years. Okay, or she going to Palos?
And we just.
There you go. Just up the one dollar.
What did they say that he was?
Yeah. I agree. That's right, that's right. Well, I saw you too.
I couldn't believe I just said. Clear lights. Oh, I know what you mean, yeah. Yeah.
They were outside of that swimming area. That's sixty-seven, that was yours nine years.
You know, either
That's a big one. It was our family, nothing was wrong, eleven-year-old kids to the oldest.
But out there. Cause that paper is just flying, you know, we're just gonna sit around.
He's a side like rock. So we're gonna start at hundred twenty-eight.
See, I'm, 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 see, I'm here, you know, a hundred and twenty plus a little bit of mill. One something I do, and I'm like, yeah, but he's I looked at it like this, I think something had to do with this. I'll be, I am. These are, how do they do that? Somebody said. Yeah. They go.
I bet they won't pay for it. Well, I have from our dad. Go down a mile of gravel.
That's not his.
Anybody have, uh, like, uh, key insurance?
Of these? These guys.
I remember that was in our school.
You know, I can't stand.
Around the kind of week or so ago, during the winter. Yeah, he, he said he was on their ninth anniversary, they stayed over there a night or so. Like, on the next day at Perkins, had a good time, they were. He said he wasn't gonna come back and help you, probably cause it was summer, did he tell you that or? He said, well, I talked with you.
Melissa.
I think I meant this way a long time ago, but I, I had to go over talk.
What's the topic or whatever?
The man, John Bert, that was pulled down, he's got a large assessment.
Well, sixty or sixty-five, yeah.
I have no question. Don't too much.
Just in case. The driver's. I never even know what it's like.
I said, if you wanna come, you have.
I didn't want to.
We've entered, we've prepared.
You can press it out, I can actually.
Kurt, are you ready or?
We'll go back into session. And the first thing I have on the agenda is James Vaskey. Jim, you have something you wanna come up and sit in the chair up here?
Well, I just, I was just wondering, I didn't, I don't own this, I owned this farm one year. And what did I intact for?
Do you have to bring the parcel?
You what?
Did, have you come up and talked to Marge yet, Jim?
We'd have to check the parcel and see how it's.
You what?
I would need to see what the parcel is on that to look at it, to see how it's listed.
Can you bring the paper up so that we can, we know what you're talking about for sure?
Is it a farm that you just recently purchased?
No, he said he owned it for one year.
Well, yeah, but I, that's.
So, oh, there's, some of these are not, or do you own any of these parcels?
No. I don't own any of that.
Did it get sold recently?
To me.
So you just bought it?
Yeah, a year ago.
Okay.
So who owns that, who owns the forty-seven hundred then?
The current landowner.
Yeah, the current, the current owner when the assessment goes out would be.
But I got a free clear title to the farm.
Yes, this is just new. This is a new assessment for a repair that was.
I know it's a new assessment, but it shouldn't be to me.
That could be something to check with. Whoever you bought the farm from or that company, they, I believe they should have disclosed that, but, um, for a project that was in the works or something, but that's. The disclosure to you is outside of our control. Um.
What, what was it for?
This is the clean out on the, uh, main open ditch B and the lateral thirty open ditch.
On which drain?
Drain eighty.
On drain eighty?
Yeah, that clean out that they did.
I would say the first place to deal with would be whoever you bought the land.
But they all died.
Well, there should have been an attorney or a real estate company or something.
I had a free clear title to the farm.
Did you get it from an estate or where did you get it, I guess?
I got it from the Schultz's. There's only one of them left now. This is.
If the land's in the district, it's still.
Yeah.
It's still a liability of the district, so. I don't.
So in other words, I did screw it on this. Well. So I need to know.
What we got next on the agenda?
Jagoche and Steve. Both requested this.
Okay. Joe and Steve, you're up next.
Yes, Steve.
You've come up.
Steve's having a little trouble with. Can I use, uh?
Yeah.
The projector now. I wanna start out with DD four lot twenty eight. Then that'll give you time down. Get this up and running here.
Joe.
Yeah. Yeah, text. And you do. Yeah, see if you can get it. He's got a dog in his car and he's kind of.
Thank you. Awesome.
Why don't you give him the doctor? I know you have one. Anyway. Final. DD four lot twenty eight, there's people here that like to talk about that. And I know Steve had it on. And, uh, the one that I saw there was that I was watching for the meeting that you would have to determine how much percentage that an individual was gonna get taken off of the assessment schedule because the meeting I was at, that was not decided.
And what do you mean?
Well, I was at the whole meeting.
Yeah, you were at the public hearing.
Yeah, and so the deal is you guys accepted the engineer's report, but you did not accept the, uh, classification reduction of eighty five percent because I didn't know that when I left. And I didn't leave until it was done.
What are you talking about? The motion was made while you were sitting here in the room. I'm lost on where you're confused.
Um. Does anybody else wanna speak too?
There was.
Hello? How that was handled?
Oh, yeah. I don't know that.
That was. Yeah, I know that was. I made it.
He made it.
Yeah, there, there was a motion, Joe.
I, you know, I was on work, you know, cause I left there feeling that that hadn't been decided because Roger asked, kinda like, does do the numbers on it and get back to him.
We can print it out.
He, he asked for the numbers to be brought to us the next, like, once he had them prepared and we would review them, but the action was already taken at that meeting.
Well, the action I thought that was taken to.
Did you read the minutes?
Well, I don't care what the minutes say because I know you guys changed records.
Did you watch the video that you were sitting here for?
No, I did not. I just, I moved on from that. That's okay with you?
Joe?
Yeah.
No, that's not really okay with me.
You got the minutes? That's what, is that what it says?
Jose, I think that's all.
All right. Real good. That's fine. That's all I wanted to say, and if these guys wanna take a little time on DD four lot twenty eight, how we got.
I got a question up in the latter twenty eight. What's the difference of a repair and a improvement as far as a landlord or a?
We, I, I've already explained this, I believe, to you, um, but as engineers have previously said, um, the difference in a repair and improvement is defined in Iowa code and it is. A repair is basically same water flow capacity, same size pipe or whatever the modern day equivalent of that size is. If it used to be a twenty seven, you might have a bigger tile if they don't make that size, but it is the same water flow capacity in very simple terms.
After I talked to you, Kyle, I talked to, uh, Tyler.
Yep.
The engineer. And he brought in, it was eighteen inches deeper.
Okay.
At one end and the other. I don't know if that's true or not. That's what he stated. Is that an improvement?
No.
It's not.
No.
But the tile map would show a thirty six on the old tile maps, and we all know tile maps aren't correct all the time. And if it was a thirty. And you went to a thirty six, that would be an improvement, correct?
Depends upon the records that we have in the courthouse, original design records. We go off of them.
You go off the tile map?
No. No, no, no.
I believe it's the, I believe it's the same.
Original record that the engineer did when he did the project to do the drainage, we go off of that record, not the drainage map.
The engineer doesn't go by that if he sees a thirty six on that. He goes, he digs down and finds it?
He goes, no, he goes back to the record.
They do investigation as well.
By digging, or do they crawl up to the thirty six or?
They don't. They go back to the original record that's in the courthouse.
Well, my son isn't here, but he stated that that tile was only a thirty and got replaced by a thirty six. Is there any knowledge to do that? And if that's true.
I.
I mean, we can, we could prove that by.
How?
Digging it up or something and putting it back together. We have to figure out if it's a thirty or thirty six.
How are, how are you going to dig up stuff that was crushed and buried?
Well, I bet you can do it.
I don't know. You're gonna put pieces together? I, to my knowledge, we put the same size pipe in the ground that we had before, so.
Is existing main still there?
The old main?
They said they.
No, yeah.
No.
They said they crushed it, but I, I doubt if they crushed every single one.
Are you gonna?
And I, I've never been.
Can you dig up a quarter mile to find out if they had one section they missed?
Well, to save a hundred thousand dollars, I sure would.
When was this engineered for this new main on the lateral?
I don't know, a year or better ago. I mean, we've already had the, the work is all been done. The completion hearing's been done.
Right, right.
We're a long way.
I'm just asking questions, trying to get information.
Yeah, I don't have an exact date off the top of my head.
So when was the, so since the original, that engineering report, you guys. So much acres have went out of that drainage district, correct? How many acres is that?
What do you mean?
That isn't participating in this project.
There's no acres that we took out of it.
Isn't there like five hundred acres that is exempt now of Jagoche's?
No.
Now that he did his privately reduced rate?
Red.
What's the reduced rate at?
There is one specific factor that was given an eighty five percent reduction. Um, but that still goes into all the rest of the factors, so it is not, they're not exempt by any means, no.
Right, so they're, they're paying fifteen percent of this project, correct?
No. Not correct at all.
What percent then?
To come up with a percent, you'd have to take the, the whole, um, cost of the project that was assessed out and do the math on what those acres specifically got for an assessment, but that is only one factor in the equation, so it does, is not a apples to apples comparison, no.
So the original estimate on, uh, assessment was done when the engineer did his report, which would have included these acres, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
The acres.
So now, so now, so now my landlord's getting a bill for way more than what the original estimate was for, and she's questioning why? Why is it so much more?
It's a whole project.
And, and that's the only, that's the only answer that I have is that, you know, some of the acres have come out and I don't know, and I don't know. Jay, I mean, that's what we should all do, what he's doing is laying our own and not have to deal with this. But, so is Jay hooked into the county tile?
Well, he is not here to speak for himself, so I don't know.
He's still using pardon.
Well, that's, I mean, that.
Jay's not.
No, Jay's.
That shouldn't, that's, that's a question for you guys. Is that still round, still hooked into the main, the county main?
At, at the hearing, I believe he talked about it. I don't, I, I don't know specifically if it was at that hearing or previous conversations, but I don't believe any of his pattern tile is hooked into the county main. And he's still, and he's, and he's still.
And no, it's two different things. You let him out.
When he, when his private tile is, is substantially.
I mean, without actual, is he hooked in? Is he not hooked in?
No, my.
I mean, to all of our knowledge here, I don't know, maybe Rick knows or somebody else, but I don't know when that work was done, if it got tied back in. I have no clue. I never drove out there and never looked.
I don't have a specific measurement on depth, but I know his private system is substantially deeper than the county system. So it would be impossible to hook up private tile that's deeper than the county main into the county main to drain.
But the ones that were originally there, were they rehooked up into that county main, the new county main? And if so. What percentage? You don't know that.
When you pattern tile the entire field, those old connections are probably going to be destroyed. So I don't think he would have put in a pattern tile system and then gone back and hooked in old connections for a system he just installed brand new. That's not logical.
I have a question. Does the other supervisors know something? If you don't know, I think I would like to listen to you. Cause it's a board, not one person, right? So what are, what the other supervisors have to say to us? But that's affecting all of us, and I'm a wife, a farmer. I manage a farmer with my husband. We have a budget, the budget is having proper tax every year. Now we have surprises every year from drainage. We have kids, we have kids, we have personal living, and we have a lot of, I don't know, from the board. We're not here to listen, I don't know. Somebody has to know. Sorry, without respect. That's why we're here.
Well, they, they are the trustees.
And they're supposed to know.
So they should all.
Yeah, so I think there's more people than.
There is a problem they don't know.
Yeah, but they have to tell us. Somebody has to tell our supervisor. I'm here as a wife. I know what is a property position. I vote.
Go back to.
Okay, and I think we have, have an answer. Not to call me approved, and we don't know what that.
Drained.
I'm sorry. I'm very guilty of that, so. But I don't think.
I, I'm here representing my landlord and her position is, why weren't we informed of this increase ahead of time? Also, we get blindsided with this thing. And with no. I said to her, I said, I'll look into it. I had no clue why it's so much more.
I think you're supposed to give notice that you're gonna change the tax bracket. I don't think that was done in one's case.
Not so.
Here's the bad part is we're setting precedents that quite a few, my farms have drainage going either right through them or right adjacent to them. We're, we've just set precedents and we're gonna let you out of the drainage district to a certain percent. If you run your own tile, a lot of guys have their own falls, no big deal anymore. So now, guess what? All them guys at the top end, they're gonna be paying for everything.
Jay was not along the ditch in that situation either.
What's that?
The ground you're talking about is not right along a ditch to just escape the district costs.
Right.
What did that save Jay from going from the seventy percent to eighty five percent? And, and nobody knows that?
That's the bad part.
And here's. It was a hundred thousand dollars. According to the March sixth statement I got for Jay, it was a hundred and fifty three thousand and this last one I got was fifty four thousand. It saved him a hundred thousand dollars and none of the board knows that? How much it saved? You just went by percentages?
I, I don't think that's correct numbers. Which one are you talking about was the first one?
These are the papers that I got, that's what I went by.
Yeah, but what time?
What time?
Like, when, when did you get them? What were they?
Mine says March, March sixth to twenty three. The other one says July ten.
So that would.
Twenty three.
That would not be a comparison between seventy and eighty five. That's a comparison between the old.
Well, seventy and eighty five went after March sixth.
That's what I'm saying. The numbers you're talking about are not representing. We, we can't all talk at the same time here.
When, when this was engineered, was it engineered without the, those acres going into that lateral?
The engineer knew full well that there was a private lift station and those acres were drained.
So why are we laying another thirty six inch main when we just took five hundred acres out of the thing? We could have dropped this down to a twenty four to handle the same amount of water. If we're completely, if he's completely cut off, then, then there's close to five hundred acres that aren't draining into that lateral.
And what I was told it was requested out of twenty four.
No, the request that was made was higher up. The request that was made was higher up in the line, and that was also later then requested to be abandoned because of the cost of doing that project through the district, and the choice was made to do that privately. That would have been a twenty four inch tile, I believe, but for a private operation to be able to hook up low enough and be able to do that project, we had to improve the county main downstream of that to get lower depth for the new potential private system. So the way. It's complicated situation, but the way you explained it was not actually correct.
So make it simple then.
Yeah.
That's what I just did.
You're not making, you said it's complicated. Make it simple.
So you.
The, the short, the short.
Can you improve something for a private?
Explain my level.
No. The simple answer is we would have had to replace the county lateral that was in place based on the request that was made by your son. We would have had to improve that.
He was requesting for his landlords.
Either way, either way.
Was for him.
The paper was signed by him. Um, we would have had to improve that, that lateral plus the main below that until the option of them doing that privately came up. So they chose that option, but we still had to do the main lower to give the district that we were responsible for serving the ability to drain.
But why wasn't it engineered without those five hundred acres is what I'm asking you. It was engineered with those five hundred acres.
Because the district did not change.
Yes, it did.
No.
Yes, it did, because he laid, probably, yes, because we have five hundred acres that you're claiming that is not draining into the lateral.
The water capa, the district did not change by district action, the watershed, or the water capa, the water amount that went into that tile changed when he installed his private tile, that does not reduce what the district is liable for and responsible to maintain.
So, you're telling me the engineer, if he would have had these facts, would have not said, you know, hey, listen, we could drop this down to twenty-four?
No.
And you don't think?
It's, it's still below a half inch drainage coefficient, which is the standard for drainage. It's still below that, so, no.
Who had liability on any of this? Uh, do you guys all have liability?
Why would we have liability on it?
Oh, because of something like this.
We just sit here and make decisions through the district.
I mean, we could, does, does county have a blanket deal on your, on liability?
No, it is.
Is the, so, all the projects are complete up there, correct? How many of you guys have drove that ditch? You're the trustees, how many?
This is the tile we're talking about, or lateral.
I, I don't care, I'm just asking a question about it, because you're the trustees, so I have a right to ask.
Which, which ditch are you talking about? Which ditch are you talking about?
Have you guys went and, and inspected, or, right, did you go up and inspect twenty-eighty, the lateral?
Yeah, I was out there multiple times.
I was asking everybody, not just you.
Did, did anybody else?
Yeah, I've been up there and looked at the ditch, and I looked at the outlet when they stuck the tile in.
What about the others? Do they know?
I've called repeatedly several things that are going on there, and to my knowledge, oh, we're gonna apply a drone, is anything done? No. You have tons of issues with that project, and nobody's addressing any of them. This is, this is one, and, and we have a lot of other big ones that are gonna happen down the road because of either the engineer did it wrong, or the contractor did it wrong. And as trustees, not supervisors, but trustees, you guys have to be on top of it, because we can't. I can't go on some of these ugly property without permission. As a trustee, you guys can go out there and look at that.
So, do you want us?
And then you would know if, if things got hooked up, if they didn't get hooked up, if they're not hooked up, I don't. But, I, I would think, as trustees and supervisors, you guys should be asking the questions hardcore, because you're taking a tax base out without ever looking to see if anybody hooked back into it. And you set precedents, and like I said, they can say, I could say whatever I want, I could lay my own main and say I did my own, and then still be hooked into the existing main, never say nothing, you're gonna come, like you said, what are you gonna do, go out there, dig it up? No.
Um, tile maps were provided, so, there was information that was provided, so, I think it's pretty standard.
I can draw tile on piece of paper too.
Well, I guess there has to be some integrity.
And it's not, I'm not saying it's about Jake, because it's not about Jake, it's the idea that these landlords were all assessed, wait, I mean, I can't imagine opening that bill and getting that shot.
And they probably should have been involved with public hearings.
Well, here's the thing.
She lives in California.
I, I think the deal is, in that, I've written up history, what they used to do when they developed these mains is, they do the engineering work, then they do the class, reclassification, or if there was already a classification in hand, then they would send, this is what your projected bill's gonna be, before they start. And what I saw happen was that it, apparently, I'm just getting different information, but it sounds like maybe the seventy percent was already out there, and that was engineered through, then the day of the meeting, you decide to change the level of relief to this individual, which is fine. You know, I'm not gonna complain in one way or the other, but the problem is, is these guys didn't know about that change. And I think you could have given notice.
There, there, there was, there was no, there was no notification that went out of what your bill is going to be, because there was not a classification for this project.
That's why you always have a backwards, that guy could have done this before they started digging, send the bill out to everybody, what do you think?
Well, Joe, the problem.
That's when they did it, that's when they did it in the past.
Joe, the problem is, if we do a pre-classification, there's a double cost, because then even when you're done with the project, then we do a classification again.
No, you don't.
Yes, we do. We, we can't use the pre and the final, Joe, that's against the law.
Oh, geez, George, you don't know nothing, you know.
Uh, you're right, I don't know much, but I do know that.
Well, if you read a little history, you'd know how to run these things, and we wouldn't have upset people here today getting slammed for a big bill that they didn't realize was coming.
There's lots of things.
They didn't get notified, that's it, I don't care what the law is, if these guys would have known, they wouldn't be upset today.
You were at the hearing, and it doesn't even involve your ground.
I don't care.
They're a community, so.
This is where you treat our districts too.
No.
It's the same thing you did on eighty, you did it on eighty-four, last four, you do it all the time, you just throw people off nilly-willy, and then hand a big bill, don't give notice. That's what this is about.
That's what the public hearings are for.
And that's what you did, do you decide, no, let's do eighty-five percent and not notify anybody.
You know, I've sat, I've sat at public hearings before, and listened to things that were said, and things that were hap, supposed to happen, don't shake your head, no. I sat meetings and heard things specifically told to some of you board members, and some of you did exactly the opposite. So, what, I mean, you can talk about public hearings all you want, but if you don't do what's said in those meetings, then it's pretty much a waste of time for everybody.
The assessments are higher than what they were, what costs, what costs assessments would be higher.
Possibly the pre that you might have had in March did not include interest to collect, and did not include engineering. So, the total cost is what the final assessment.
Why did it not include engineering?
Probably my crap damage.
We didn't, we didn't have that.
Which was eighty thousand dollars, eighty thousand dollars, basically.
And I believe the construction expenses were more than planned because of the distance to that junction point.
Three hundred feet more.
And that changes.
But that's a chunk of change.
But, Marge, I don't understand, I think if I stopped last week, you said the interest is up to December first?
Right, for collection.
What if people pay right away?
It, it covers all of that, so then.
So, then they get interest back?
Um, it would go in the fund, and then would offset any future repairs or anything that would stay with that fund.
So, they get charged for the interest to December first?
That's usually the standard for assessments, to allow people to pay up till.
What's the interest rate?
On that, it's five percent previously.
Did they have the option to pay it right away?
They can't pay ahead, that was.
I mean, why should, why should they have to pay interest if they could say, I can write you a check right now?
That's the process of assessments, uh, that's standard operating procedure, it's always been that way.
Yeah, the treasurer doesn't have a way to.
No different than anything that's been done in the past.
Why, you said that him, uh, rates wasn't included on everything that, that's March sixth one that I had?
I'm not sure, what year is that, March?
March sixth of twenty-three. But my, my family doubled from thirty-five thousand to seventy thousand, and it just could have been on the eighty thousand they can.
Thirty-seven, right, what's the amount, final amount on the last page?
Of each, both of them?
On the March, on the March one.
Five hundred thousand.
On both?
She said the last one, or March.
The March one.
The other one was in July, I don't know, that included the engineer, five hundred twenty-five thousand.
Probably final cost for engineering and everything current.
Which was eighty-eight thousand, but like I said, my family's went up to thirty-five thousand. And I also, on March, one of my farms that doesn't, doesn't have any water running into the lateral twenty-eight, in March I didn't get assessed, and in July I did. And I see there's another piece that this person didn't get assessed anything, and they're in the red line also.
I don't know what that was.
So, I can show you, I can show you that later.
Okay, yeah, I'm not sure, I'll still look at that.
But that's what Vince was saying, landlords were just surprised, I think they were fine with that seventy-thirty. I looked at, I watched a video on, I, I wasn't here, should have been here, I, if I, if I knew it was gonna go from seventy to eighty, eighty-five, I would have been here. But I was happy with that seventy-thirty. But it seemed like the one party said, hey, are you guys gonna vote on that today, because there's nobody else here to go up against us, to bring any points out, the lies that we have told you to persuade us to go that way. And they were lies, because my name was drug into it. But they persuaded everybody to vote yes on that eighty-five, which saved them a hundred thousand dollars, according to what I got from the auditors. And that's where a lot of the cost was, the eighty-eight thousand I didn't know at that time. And that's why the landowners, like I said, the, the next week I came, I said, you, you favored one party, and there was twenty-some landowners that got, picked up the one party's.
So, the point, the point I was trying to make before is, those two assessment schedules are not the difference that you are referring to, you're saying it's the difference between seventy and eighty-five percent for one factor, and the, the first.
No, I'm saying that's what came into play after March sixth, and it goes to like ten.
I, I, hold on, hold on. Uh, I will. I will finish explaining what I was saying. The initial one you would have had, would have had no reduction, it would have been the old schedule. So, if you were okay with seventy percent reduction, but not eighty-five, for Marge to produce those numbers, we would have had to have had that schedule in the computer system to be able to produce those numbers. So, that is not possible, because we didn't have that schedule. So, it is not a comparison between seventy and eighty-five, it's a comparison between zero percent reduction and eighty-five. Do you follow what I'm saying for the comparison?
I don't know how mine doubled then.
Because the one factor you're talking about was not included at all prior to.
From a new schedule, which.
Yeah, we did, it wasn't included. Did the tile company get paid? Did the Tyler get paid? Did McClure get paid? McClure took a lot of money out of this community.
They were not.
Did he get paid? Did the tile get paid, or did the Tyler get paid? Yes. So, now, what are we talking, and then we get a bill like this, seventy-eight thousand dollars.
I think you're talking about something completely different.
Yeah, that's a different deal, but you still got, everybody got paid, didn't they?
So, Vince, the, the question you asked, the two schedules that Rick is comparing, is the old schedule from.
Original.
I don't even know how many years ago.
Yeah, I, I understand that, zero to the.
Versus the new schedule that was approved by the board has that eighty-five percent reduction for the private tile factor. The seventy percent that was proposed by the engineer was not figured in a calc, in a calculation before that was ever given to people in that form.
Okay, so, why not go by the recommendations of the engineer at the seventy percent?
Because of the individual circumstances for that situation.
Well, it, to me, it's starting to get like, um, who you are makes a difference, you know? And I wanna hear some of these other supervisors talk too. You guys forced me into getting a supervisor, and I gotta go exact, or hire an engineer, and I gotta go exactly by what he said, because he's the expert, you told me, in, in a process that we wanna do. And now, you're going in against an engineer that you paid him money for his expertise, and now, you say, well, he really doesn't know what he's doing, we're gonna go from seventy percent to eighty-five percent, just because we think it's a good idea.
He's, he specifically said the lift station is not something he could factor into an equation. So, he said the numbers-based approach that he arrived at was limited.
Exactly, so, so, just like you can't prove how many tiles are still hooked into that existing, uh, or the new main, you, you can't give me a number, so, we can't say, you know, that was his choice, put in lift pump, pump, good for him. Don't make the rest of the district pay.
But my point is, the numbers saying he got a hundred thousand dollars.
So, how did you come at that eighty-five percent then? That's what I wanna hear from the rest of the board, how have you come up with eighty-five percent versus seventy? What was your expertise that said, as a drainage engineer, they gave you the right to say, well, we feel that, you know, this lift pump is worth fifteen percent more to the district to pay for it?
Where'd that come from? Where's the base? Because we have numbers, we have to have papers, so.
Yeah, what, what did you base eighty-five percent on?
I don't know, it's not an answer, sorry, that's why we are here.
Are you asking me?
Yeah, I'm asking the whole board.
I'm asking the board, I see you saying the board, like you are good.
How did you come up with eighty-five percent?
What's that, is the supervisor alone?
I asked that at the meeting, how you come up with it.
Nobody wanna answer something, that's something you want.
And then here, right here, you just said screw his work.
But you also said a hundred percent.
But it's not personal.
Well, I thought it spoke to the leaders.
Yeah, it's, it's a guy who have the personal value.
We just want how you arrived at eighty-five percent.
Big professional. Who is able to answer? It's a simple question, right? Somebody has to be able to answer, that's why we are here.
Jack, anybody else, Roger, how did you guys come up with eighty-five percent?
I have five supervisors, I have one.
I was there.
Vince, you know, if you're gonna tile, put in a new main and put a lift station in, that's two and three feet deeper than the old county main, you're gonna hook all your tile and your ground up to that, if you don't, you are an idiot, that's how we come up with eighty-five percent.
So, we are idiots, that's a nice term for us, they are professional.
And the engineer didn't give us a recommendation, it was from him and his viewers that viewed it, and they know nothing about lift stations either, so that's how we came up with it.
And what justified the rate?
Is, is that the right number? I don't know.
Oh.
It's a number that we came up with.
Jesus, I don't know.
What, what was, I, I guess, uh, what was your, who was the big push to move it from seventy to eighty-five percent, the landowner, or the, I mean, did he come up with this eighty-five percent, or did you?
He objected formally during the hearing, and did he request ninety percent reduction?
Who is he?
Jay.
Jay.
Ah, final one, okay.
Um, so.
Teach us how to do what he does to be benevolent, that's why we are here. If you guys can do something, how one find, we should be able to do to the community. And that's for the final, don't take it, I'm asking for the board, we vote for you. For what he did that allowed him to get that, teach us that we'll come all together, and we all can be benevolent, right? And you guys don't have an answer, that's very strange, and I'm here as a wife.
The information, the information that I have, the information that got into the boardroom.
By who?
By the engineer and, and the go, Jay, and the Tyler. Jay took most, not all the water out of this district, put in his own tile, and took it out of the district.
So, you just count to him so he can pay the tile?
Took, no, no, took, took the water out of this district, which benefited everybody else, because that water no longer was going to be part of draining into your drainage district tile.
So, why wasn't the, the landowners told this, Jack? That's what we're saying, that's the whole thing, you know?
What do you, what do you mean they weren't told that? I've said that how many times today?
What's that?
I've said that how many times today, his private tile system directly benefited the district facility by taking water away from it.
I tell you what, I farmed there my whole life, Kyle. You can say what you want, but Rick and we all know, we deal with it. And if they say they got another eighteen inches of fall on that thing, I would lay a big bet that says it ain't there.
That's why there's a lift station.
Because you really think, you really think it's gonna help us on the north end of that lateral? Ask Rick. Rick, do you think that's gonna help my whole way up there?
I don't think any of my water goes to that lift station. But according to that meeting, they sat there and say, oh, we take all, the runoff comes into our farm. I have the section of that, the quarter right north of them, and I don't think there's one drop that comes across that unless we get across the road. And it goes all through that low, that old system. It didn't go through any of that new system.
So are you guy, are you guys saying that the repairs that were done or the improvement that was done didn't work? You're all having crops drowned out, little handers?
It's not going to work, Jack.
Well, I'm asking, is it not working? The work, the work that was done is not, has not benefited you?
Well, we haven't had enough frame to, to even test it out. But what I'm saying is the farms that I have in that area, that is not gonna, that's not, what was done is not gonna change our drainage one, one bit.
You're a hundred percent correct in that. It will not change your drainage because it's not an improvement project. That is the basis of the conversation here. It is not going to change your water flow. It's the same size pipe.
Now wait, that's, I thought it was supposed to, you guys just said it was supposed to.
It just said so now.
We were gonna get the benefit.
Well, the benefit's coming from five acres that, that took that water in a bigger direction.
Benefit.
And it's no longer going to slow your drainage going through.
Just realize you guys are setting precedents now. You cannot deny anybody. If I wanna do this now, you can't deny me to do it.
Vince, if you, if you have a hundred year old tile that is broken regularly, just.
Some of these arms that we're fixing all the time.
If you have a hundred year old tile that you're fixing constantly and you do a repair project and replace a section, whatever, whether that's a hundred feet or a mile, you have a benefit from that project in the form of a new pipe. Not necessarily more water capacity. Benefit is a big term. So you did get a benefit as a district from a new pipe in the ground. Do you disagree with that?
I don't disagree with the new pipe. I disagree if this engineer's saying that he got eighteen inches of fall, more fall from the existing. Without a lift pump, I don't know how you do that.
He has a li, he has a lift.
He's got, no, no, this is, there's supposed to be eighteen inches of drop on arms.
Better, better.
On the county. More than what was before. So I'd like to see that engineering report that.
Yeah.
There's more.
That's, that's, that is all in the engineering report. You can find that. You can talk to Tyler. That's easiest place to go.
The drainage group.
But, but the simple, the simple answer.
The, the depth of the tile was late in the fall, that's all there.
The, the simple answer to that.
How'd that look when you went out there and looked at it, Jack?
We had it.
Spot on?
The, the engineers are, are hired to do that work.
Exactly. He said seventy percent. You guys hold your day deep.
That is completely different.
But I don't think that ten percent difference would've, would've made, was, was responsible for your, whatever you said, doubling of your assessment.
They're going off of two different assessments.
Yeah, it's two different things.
That, that, that's ten percent.
It's not comparing apples to apples.
If you're saying his assessment should've been a hundred and fifty thousand, ten percent of that is like fifteen thousand. That wouldn't have added, doubled your assessment or Bauer's assessment.
That's, that's the difference between zero percent reduction that it would've had previously to eighty-five. That ten percent on top of seventy is not the majority of the change. The majority of the change is the seventy percent. The fifteen on top of that is additional to the seventy, but it is not the majority of it.
Well, I agree with you, Vince, what you said. Yeah, if there's, if you wanna put in your own private tile and run it a different direction, we probably have to go back and do the same thing for you.
And you had to drop our price because you are doing privately, so we can't take our credit. This is how I understand what happened. You dropped on me because you do private.
Well, you know, if, if you gotta run it somewhere else and not, and not use.
You have to, you have to follow the proper procedure for that. This stayed in the same drainage district. So there are pieces of.
You, what you did for him, if we do, you're gonna drop ours the same way, with the same way we said.
Do you have the ability to take out, take it a different direction, a different outlet somewhere and you're not gonna use any of the drainage district tile? We probably have to look at, look at the same situation.
Yeah, that's what my question, I'm just.
Yeah.
We need to understand that.
But you're talking about spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to, to do all that too.
All, all of these projects could be done privately, but the drainage districts are there for a reason. And we don't need to get into that, but there's a entire code section for that, so.
Back to the depth, Jack, you know, like I see Tyler, he showed me on the whatever he comes up in eighteen deeper in the beginning, eighteen deeper where he ended off and where he ends off.
For which, for which town they're talking? The drainage district or?
Well, twenty-eight.
From that.
And where they ended off, the Clark family or they came in and did their own private twenty-four, hooked onto that thirty-six. And that was agreement, I think, with the, they have with the board.
No.
They do that on their own.
Yep, because you requested that to be abandoned.
But the person that hit the twenty-four, he said that depth didn't change any. It was equal to what was there. The old thirty or thirty-six. That's what he stated.
I don't buy that for a second.
I think eighteen inches, you would see that.
I, I don't buy that information for a second.
Well, how do, how do we know? I mean, Tyler shows that, but. That's hearsay, yeah.
GPS, GPS verification, that whole project.
Well, you could see eighteen inches. I mean.
The daylight that tile.
A little more complicated than that.
I wasn't there. That's what I was told. Absolutely hearsay. That's all hearsay.
They looked later, they laid it themselves. I question the, the tile, if they hired it done, I'd like to.
It was, it was done by.
Person that laid it.
There, there's.
It was done by, by Steve Mankey, right?
Yeah, he.
Well, he's around somewhere, Jack.
It was done by Steve Mankey.
Yeah, North Island Drainage. You know, and he was really upset that, that they couldn't gain any depths on that private.
They didn't gain any depth. It was the same as the old one.
Did he hook on to the new system?
Yeah, I had thirty-six.
I'm su, I'm sure he did. That's what.
If you weren't there, how do you know? Same question you were asking us.
They just, they laid a twenty-four in there and then hooked it up?
Oh, well, hey, he's got his own private tile now, so maybe they should just let you off.
Well, if he hooked it to the top of the new one or to the bottom of the new one would make quite a bit of difference. And I've seen it done both ways. I think he said the bottom was even with the bottom. That's what I was told.
Well, I don't know.
Eighteen inches is a lot. I mean.
I don't know how he would see the bottom of the old tile that was crushed.
I don't either.
Well, he was out there earlier when the new main was put in and he thought they couldn't get it deep enough, right? Isn't that what, this is what he was telling me until they were gonna wait for the new project to be put in and gain them a foot.
Well, he couldn't even do this until we put the new main in. That was my understanding.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm just, like I said, that's all I'm here to say.
But what I'm saying is that, this, you know, the difference between seventy and eighty-five wouldn't have done anybody's assessment. That's, you're talking about that question.
Not even.
A few thousand dollars.
Correct, correct.
Well, just what they said, where the one assessment didn't have any of that.
Zero percent for private.
They had zero percent in it and then the next one had, had eighty-five. And then.
So it wasn't, it wasn't comparing seventy to eighty-five. It was comparing zero to eighty-five.
And I was just going by the date, March, you know, so I, I knew the seventy was out there, so that's what I thought, you know?
But, but we don't have the ability to give you those numbers until we have a classification.
Except estimate on the, the March sixth one.
But that would've been based off of the old schedule.
And I didn't know. Just what I got. That wouldn't have been based on actual numbers.
No.
But I knew the seventy was out before that. That was out in February, I believe.
It was early, yeah.
So I assumed that's what it was. But it wouldn't have had any bearing on the numbers he got in March?
No.
That's the problem. Joe, you have more?
Yeah. I, I put in a repair request on DD four lot eleven. I don't know if month or so, but we've done a little recon work on that. And I got a video of the flow.
Where did you get the video of flow from?
Um, myself. In the box. You'll see it.
The ju, the junction box?
Yeah, the junction box, yeah.
And you got permission to do that?
We went out there.
You got permission or not?
Yeah, I talked to Dan Mankey. So you don't have to.
Hey, let me stop.
So here we are. This is DD four lot eleven and this is Harrison thirty-six. And if you see the two rails there. Uh, there's a box up in Union to Wildlife Refuge. Um, I don't know if you can see my pointer or no. Okay, uh, that's the north box in Harrison thirty-six. And where the blue arrow is on the bottom, that's the south box in, in thirty-six. So this is where we went out to view the tile. So here is a video of that tile movement. And you'll see the thirties to the bottom. We're looking at thirty right now. We're gonna throw a twig in there. And that thing ain't gonna move. That's the point of the thirty. You got about six or eight inches of water in that tile that's not moving. Then as you watch this, what we do is we throw a twig into the twenty-four relief that was put in according to the records. And look, look at that movement. That's moving pretty fast. That thirty is just stagnant water. I think you've seen enough of that movement. There's the thirty. What we decided to do is throw some ping pong balls down in there and see where they come out at the, at the dredge. We put the yellow ones in the thirty and let them go. You'll see them kinda going there. That water's hardly moving. Put about, and put about twenty-four balls down there. Those balls pretty much just kinda stopped right in that pipe. Then what we did, what we did is we, we made the flow go over to thirty. Then we dropped white ping pong balls down in this twenty-four. And that idea was to see which outlet these balls come out of. We opened that up now and that one, that pipe, that's twenty-four. They're all gone. So now we know we have a restriction somewhere in the pipe, south of the Harrison thirty-six box. And in the history records, it shows that we have a box in Greenwood Warren and Tim Goshia has confirmed that. And it's about sixteen inches deep to the top of it. And it, the idea here is we do not wanna spend engineering costs on a third engineering to go look at that box. We wanna be able to go out there after fall harvest, let, uh, North Island Drainage take a look at it and see if the pipe is running south of there or if the restriction is south of there yet. That's what, that's what the deal is. I, I don't like that. Dan Widmer, he was the guy that tried to do fake records on trying to get a replastic on this. Now here's, uh, Randy seven outlet. And, uh, here's, uh, what we did is we put a little chicken wire up there and we caught balls. We got all white balls in there. That's what we did. And that, that outlet is running really good. I'm thinking making a lot of a lot of falls towards tail end of that. There's a thirty-six inch pipe further up. There's a pipe up there. This is a Randy seven outlet. And there, I went up there just to take a picture of the pipe. There's only one pipe coming in there. I believe it's a thirty-six inch. I'm going by the, there's five pipe that are sitting along the dredge. I don't know if you guys have ever seen them. They just sit out there. They're thirty-six inch pipe. I think what they did is they replaced that pipe with this plastic pipe.
Are you talking out there on anthems?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I think they did. You know, the thirty, the ones on, on surface are the thirty-six. If you guys have any questions here, feel free to pipe in. Okay, here's how that outlet's running. You can just see that. It's really good. I think there's a lot of grade towards tail end of that outlet. You know, it's running good, but we didn't get any, any yellow balls coming out of there. So then we go to the Randy six outlet, which has just been replaced. And here it's running here. Now we didn't get any, the yellow balls are somewhere. We just don't know where they're at. My point is, is after fall harvest, we'd like to have North Island Drainage just go in there and just take a look at that box, see where the restriction is. Uh, don't spend a whole heck lot on engineering fees. That was not my point. Find out where the restriction is in this tile. Here's why. I've talked to the Union to Wildlife Refuge and I know Kyle has talked to him also. It sounds like they're, they're gonna get their flooding to put a new pipe in Harrison thirty-six between the two boxes. Okay?
North of the two box, north.
Yeah, it starts at Harrison thirty-six. They're gonna, just gonna put solid pipe in their property so that it doesn't quite come to the south box. Cause the south box is about five.
And why it comes to the north box?
Yeah, it does not, it does not go to the south box at all.
Which is now?
There, the junction box immediately south of the Union slip by, it ground by a couple hundred feet would be the north box you're referring to.
That's the south, south box. We're on the south side of thirty-six. And then they got a north box on thirty-six. You know what? I'll go back to now. Just go on here. Let me just go back.
There's only two boxes?
No.
Yeah, there's three boxes entering. Well, there's one in Greenwood one. Then there's two in Harrison thirty-six. That's good. Okay, let's see here. There, there they are. This is a, the blue arrow on the bottom is in, uh, it's a well farm that's farmed by Dan Bankin at this point. And that, that is not in the school property, but you see where the thirty-six is there? That's where the school property ends. And the way I understand it, they're gonna put solid pipe in from what their fence line north to get out of their property or. You know what they, I don't, I never talk to them in detail. I just know when I heard that this, this pipe was restricted, I'm like going, oh gosh, maybe we oughta look at this, see where the restrictions at.
I, I have never been in that north box.
Joe, have you ever seen that north box?
No.
I don't do that. I don't think it's not.
But you don't have a problem? Well, here's the deal. You may have a problem between the north and the south box. But we still have a problem south of the south box.
The, the point Rich said is there's not a junction box there. The tile come together, but there's not a junction box.
Well, I don't, that's what the records indicated.
I, I've never seen one there.
Well, they, they bring that, a tile together and well, Eddie Bauer, who is, did I talk to you on that? No, I talked to Jim Julius. Jim Julius said that Eddie Bauer and him would go to that box there.
I've never heard of that.
Yeah, the north box, I don't know.
I don't know, I've never been to the north box, I've been to the south box.
So, and maybe he didn't know what I was talking about.
I, I, there, there is two boxes that I'm aware of on that system, but I'm not aware of the north box.
Okay, well, maybe there's that one, you know.
But yes, you're. Kinda correct, the one you have labeled as a south box would be. Just south of the potential repair through the Union slough.
Right, and I know we have a restriction. South of that yet, because of the stagnant water that's in, here's what happened. When we diverted the water from the twenty four, Steve, Steve was what, been North Iowa Drainage. He thought we'd have water gushing out of that box, he says, no, when you read the record, what they did is when they put the relief lines in, they were supposed to tie. The relief line into the old main, so it would drop in there. So. I don't know why we have water sitting there, even if you have a poor grade. It should drain down. We were out there just yesterday, it's still got six or eight inches of water in it. So we know there's restriction, we don't know if it's in the road. And we don't know, we don't know exactly where it's at, but it's south of the box. But if we can look at, just take a peek into the one in Greenwood. That would tell us whether we have a restriction further south or whether it's north, it's a real simple check. And Tim Goshia says it's a matter of taking sixteen inches of soil off and left, and you've been out there Kyle, they've had repair requests on that. I guess Tim said that he's even got a panel right now or something like that, it's sucking.
There's, there's a plan to replace that this fall.
Right.
That junction box.
But, the problem is, don't you think you should coordinate that if, if the school's gonna put in new tile?
I don't think that junction box specifically has anything to do with the Union slough project.
It's the system.
Yeah, but that, but that repair request was for that.
When you started looking at the history records, there've been very little repairs south of that. What I call the south box in section thirty, Harrison thirty six, I've read the record. And there's like three repair requests total on that tile south of there, and then most repairs come cleared down to the ditch. Just cleaning it out so the water can move. So, the deal is. If they're gonna replace that main up there. And it looks to me like they got a pile of ball. Going into seven. I think, and you don't wanna lay the pipe. If you could lay that pipe deeper in Harrison to get you a better outlet north, wouldn't you wanna do that, Rich?
Definitely.
You know, I think everybody out there would wanna do it, you know what I mean? So, what I'm saying. Is let's take a peek in that, see if we still have a restriction, if there's a restriction there, we gotta find the restriction, cause that thirty is not operating to its full capacity. That's all I'm saying.
Then that would need to be requested.
I, I requested a repair for the restriction, I already got that in here. And, but I don't.
You had a, you had filled out number fifty eight, it says investigate lateral oven tile per your request, and the map was attached, which I don't have that here.
Right.
Your request, if my memory serves correctly, was to investigate whether there's a thirty six inch tile going into. The north end of that ditch, which has recently been filled in, and you had made the accusation.
No, I said that there was a restriction. I, I wanna find the restriction, and I used McClure's map, cause they got a thirty two inch tile coming into a sixteen. And I said, that's where your restriction's at.
What's the date? June twenty three, yeah. I will find the email here.
When I put that in, we already knew that that pipe was not moving. You know what I mean, so I just looked at the map, and I go, what, Jesus, they put a thirty two? And hooked it to a sixteen, and you can't find the sixteen at the outlet.
The map isn't correct.
Yeah, I know that, you know, I, you know, and I'm not gonna argue that point. But the thing of it is, we have a restriction, you cannot deny that.
I'm not gonna argue that point with you, but the old map's not correct.
That's fine, but I don't disagree with you. But I, I will say that that thirty inch, according to what I've seen, is, it's restricted somewhere, and we know it's south of the. South box on thirty six.
Been restricted for quite a long time.
Well, I'm just telling you, we just gotta investigate it, I don't care how long it's been restricted. That's what I wanted to have looked at, with my repair request, I wanna make that clear today. Uh, we don't have to spend a whole lot of engineering fees.
You don't have to have, you don't, you don't need an engineer to investigate.
That's right, and North Iowa Drainage is right there.
That's fine.
He's got, you know, I just told him to see a bunch of money spent.
I would not have, um. Investigation of this magnitude, go out and dig some holes up, that makes no sense to me.
We just wanna uncover that box in Greenwood.
If.
Take a look to see if that. East thirty two is running or thirty or whatever it is coming in there, which one was that?
If, if you want, if you want the whole system checked out to see where the restriction is, it should be dug up and televised, which. I've done in multiple other districts, it is efficient.
Costs a lot of money, I know we got dead water, all you gotta do is find out where the water isn't dead. You can go to that box and save a mile of investigating, no, then you know whether you gotta go north of the box or south of the box in Greenwood one.
How often?
Why don't you wanna do that, save us some money, instead of just taking our checkbook and throwing our money around, making buddies with it?
Your accusations are baseless.
Well, we'll need.
Why not do that though Kyle, why can't they go in and look at that?
Because it's much more cost effective to dig it up.
Shit.
What about the other supervisors?
You're full of it. You're not looking at that.
You ain't paying a damn bill. That's where you are, you don't pay your bills.
What about the other supervisors, that's dope.
It's not uncommon to, to, to open up, you know.
At least they'll know if it's north or south of there.
How often are you going to dig it up?
I just wanna look in that box right now, they don't know which way to go from there, what's wrong with that? You have a problem with that.
I'm not saying you can't start there, but digging it up every hundred feet is ridiculous.
I don't think he's saying dig it up every hundred feet, he wants to know if it's north or south of that box that's in Mary Elmer.
Digging there is down to a mile, if it's north, it could be under the road.
I don't see a problem with that, you can, you can run a camera in either direction.
You're gonna have to file a request, look at it, because your original request doesn't give us the authority to do that.
Well, then that request you're after the meeting is.
File a request to have it dug and then say no camera, put it right in your request, and we will dig.
All right, real good. Is that true with you, Rich?
I would say they're gonna replace the box to begin with.
Right.
Once we can open it up, where you can see there, having what's going on up the south of there.
Yeah.
Once you look in that box, you're gonna have an idea. If there's a problem further north or if it's south. But otherwise, it could be under the road, you dig up by the road and see what tile looks like there, a camera would be nice. But the camera gets high brightness, you got a camera sitting there, and you got somebody digging, and the guy with the camera sits and watches the guy dig for a while. And the guy that digs watches the guy with the camera, when you're paying three, not three hundred and nothing.
Probably if the tile's full of water, people can't put a camera down there.
That's right, and there's also mud in tile. And the camera that, that was used up on thirty six. He, they get it anyways, and there were other restrictions there. But it was also, there's mud in the bottom in places, the camera's not gonna go very far.
I mean.
And that was the point of documents. We've done that quite often, we've done investigative, you know, done investigative.
Yeah, we see where it's at here and further, you don't know where to start, hopefully you find a restriction and. Figure it out, if you're, if it's flowing on the south end, you get to a point, it's not flowing to the north, you know the problem.
Right.
Between those two points, and you dig in between them. Narrow enough, you don't, you don't have to dig.
But Joe, you just put in a request.
Okay, I'll, I'll square it with you guys, so we're all on the same page, but I don't want a whole lot of money spent on just taking a look at it. That's all there is to it, and it's fucking down a guy with equipment right in the section, and he didn't do a good job.
Is it possible when somebody's out there doing this check, and that we can be notified, so, so we can see what's going on?
I'll put, I'll put your number on the request line, so that they can call us when they're out there digging.
Because we've investigated this thing for, for twenty years.
But they, yeah.
They've been, county's been out digging a couple times, they dig down the tile and it's full of water. It's a long time to dig, and one time my question is after it's raining.
Right.
The, the map you, the map you attached.
And it's gonna be draining some waters.
Call me when they're out there, so, you know, I go out, when they dig it up, I, I, quite often, I'll, I'll, they dug it up so I can be there personally, and they look, they're got it too.
Yeah, I say that.
Kyle Rogers. The, the map that you attached in your email on May twenty sixth specifically highlights a restriction. Within a thousand feet of the end, the old end of the ditch.
Well, I'm looking at my McClure's map. I'm looking at McClure's map, and so, before I started looking. There's a high probability if you stick a thirty two on that sixteen, that's gonna be restriction. Now you guys approved the map, McClure's approved the map, so I gotta go by the map. And I realized the maps can be off, okay? Now I'm not finding the sixteen relief out there that's on the map on either side of those pipes.
My point is, the request you put in earlier this year does not address what you're saying today at all.
That's why, that's why Mr. Jack is asking to redo the request.
Yeah, we're gonna redo the request.
So we don't need to go back to what you said, you just said you're doing it, that's very simple. We are doing, I'll call to Mr. Jack, right, Mr. Jack?
I think Rich, we were out there twelve years ago looking at this.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you were further north.
It was after, after rain when it wasn't draining, so I.
We couldn't request a check in, well, they came and it's full of water, and you dig down to it, and you see there's water in it that's flowing, well, it's gonna be after heavy rain. Yeah.
But what we're questioning is the bottom half, why it's not flowing.
See, here's the deal, we went out there yesterday. And there ain't any water in the tile, that's how dry it is, but there was still water in that thirty. We couldn't leave it, so there's, there's just a restriction.
You can replace a new request.
Yeah, I wanna redo the repair request.
Do it, then you request, Mr. Jack, yeah, I believe a request. But then we can go from there, right?
As you're digging, find out what is there, Joe talks about what, something's been replaced with something smaller.
No.
Well, they, in, in, in Harrison thirty six. What happened, when you read the. When you're, what's on the map there was too small, that evidently when they put that new system in, right at the start. They put the wrong size tile in between the south box. And what you guys are calling is not a box up to the north, you know, where they widen sixteen stuff. And so, what happened was. Is that they bought a bunch of crappy concrete tile, and within two years after they put the new system in. They're, they're doing this big repair project, which cost just about as much as putting the main in. Well, that's when the second engineer found out. That. The tile was too small between Ann Harrison thirty six, so they put a twenty four inch relief, that's station one hundred of the, I don't know if it's station. One thirty six or something like that, it's in the records. And they, they put a twenty four in, and they shot straight down into the box, and then called a curve around, that's the way the record reads, I'm not saying it's true. So then, then the other part of the record that comes in, here's the deal. You had Ambrose Kennedy, and you had Joe Well. Owning the property up in these areas, and back in the early forties and stuff. The government would come out, pay you a percentage five percent of the laterals if you had a half inch drainage coefficient to your plot. And I think Joe Well. And Ambrose Kennedy were shooting for, or at least wealth were shooting to get a half inch drainage coefficient to their land that they owned up there, so that they could get government money. To put in their, uh, lateral systems, which is fine. And, and so that's where, that, they had engineering reports where they were gonna put a relief in. And, and then they scrapped the engineering report, and then you, you go down through the. The record and they say, well. People are saying that these reliefs were put in, but it wasn't done by an engineering firm, so there's no profile, so we really don't know what's out there. I will agree with that, you know what I mean, and I will agree a hundred percent with Ron, these maps aren't correct. But all I know, you got a three inch tile. Holy sixteen inches of water, and that's not right, I don't care what the grade is or whatever, maybe there's a dip in the damn tile, hell, I don't know. But we'll know a lot more after we open up that box in Greenwood, whether we gotta go north or south. You know, and then the other deal is, if you put that box in new. When I looked at that, the way that main is running into that, into Ramsey seven, that thirty six that we saw, man, it's really running in there. That's telling me they got a lot of guy named Gray there, and I'm kinda wondering if they didn't throw a lot of, uh. Grade away, right at the start, that's where they put them in when they dug them, you can't blame them. And see, when you get up north of the box. Of that, well, I call it the north box. The engineers say that they have tile all the place, and that's where a lot of the, that's where you guys have been doing a lot of investigating, is north. Of thirty six and north and west, you know, above that top, top blue arrow, you guys have been out. In there, and that's where a lot of the repair requests are at. Uh, but you get south of that box, there's hardly any, and all the engineer reports that investigated that tile said that that tile was all in good shape. You know what I mean, south of the box, the, the south box. You know, so. So I don't know, you know, I mean, you know, I, here's the deal, if, if the slough is gonna put in a pipe. And we got landlords up north that need better drainage. Even though I'm not gonna benefit, yeah, I'll pay for some of it, you know, cause we do have some ground on that. But here's the thing. I think we gotta see what we got going on south, because if you're gonna put that box in Greenwood. Doesn't that have to be in a certain, that's gonna have to be at, you know, the certain level, you can't.
The plan is to have it deeper, to account, to account for any future repairs.
Okay, so they're taking an elevation off the beginning of the ditch, so they, they're not doing that.
No.
I just don't wanna be spending money then, a year or two later, be spending. You know what I mean, and if, if the slough is coming in with a, a new pipe. I'd like to work with them, cause they did a really nice job on like DD four. I don't know, there was a lad I was on, I don't know what it did happen, I would talk to them guys, and do their. Stuff, and it worked really well for us, I mean, as far as cost go, and we got a good pipe. You know. So, and I know that the slough's gonna be getting its money, and I think they're thinking their, their fiscal year starts in September. Again, and they're thinking they're gonna get awarded the grant money, cause they were second in line for this project here.
Okay, so now you have to decide, right?
Yeah, I'm just gonna amend the, just to re-put our requests, right.
Has any, has anybody on the board talked to the wildlife and the fishing wildlife, uh, lately? They were up there digging for three, three days this past week.
Thursday, Thursday and Friday mostly, yes.
Are they working with you, or?
Yes.
Okay, uh, probably four or five years ago, I, I talked to that Ed, that's, I think he's still there.
Ed Mendering, yeah.
Uh, I asked if the landowners farther north could upsize that and pay the difference in the pipe, and he thought they could work that out. But I, I haven't mentioned that, cause I didn't know this was gonna go through now. But I.
To do an improvement project, I think you'd have to go all the way back to the ditch, so. I, I don't know how you can do an improvement project.
Right in that area.
Or are you talking, why don't you go back to the map, or?
I don't, I don't know that any, I mean, we could ask any engineer, but I don't know that they'd do an improvement. Two miles away from the ditch and not improve the stuff in between.
Well, the other thing is the grade, you'd have to do, do the whole grade.
See, that's why we wanna figure out what we got at the ditch, cause that's what I'm talking.
I suppose they got their own engineer.
They have one with Ducks Unlimited involved, yes.
Okay.
But we have Bolton and Mink for the county side things, so there's.
I hope they're working together and.
Yeah.
I, I hope if it needs to be improved farther north, that they'll be making it at this time.
No one had asked for an improvement to my knowledge.
I did four or five years ago with Fish and Wildlife. At that time, everything was on hold, they didn't know if they had the money, I didn't know this was gonna go through now. I see they were out digging this last week, three days.
Two days.
Uh, comments on that s- south junction box, I've been out there, it's been a while. A years ago, it looked like there was a wall in between them tiles. It looks like that got knocked down, so that east tile. Is prevailing over. And the other one, and the one that goes north and our way, that's the one that's slow. But to me, that tile, the, that wall probably is three or four feet high, I don't know, but it looks like it got knocked over to. To relieve more pressure on the east side. That's just comments on the east box, or the south box.
When we was up there once, I thought the west one had more grade than the east one.
It's flowing like it, yeah.
Are you talking the tiles?
The wall down, Roger?
It was, I don't remember if the wall was up.
It's hard to see if there's a lot of water in there, but there's a, it looks like a cement wall that's been knocked over.
I know it's done about, but, but that west tile's got grade and the east one don't. And so it looks like it flows.
Are you talking the tiles that go through the federal? Are you talking the tiles that go through the federal ground?
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause the east one makes a big loop to the northeast and then comes back, so to get from the two points, the one is more of a straight shot, which is not even on our map, um, but there has to be a substantial difference in grade between those two lines, because the other one has a lot more distance to it.
I gotta look if you remember when we were out there with the camera.
Yep.
The east one is just about full of dirt.
Like ninety percent full, yeah.
So you quit, you said it was just quit digging because it obvious it was shot.
Yep.
No, no good.
But, but to do.
The west one, the west one, which is the clay tile, that's where the water's going, it's all going through that one tile now. And it has restrictions, there's with the camera, there's several places where it's, the tile has settled or whatever. There's ruts in it, the camera couldn't go because of the ruts, and, and it was obvious that one needs to be replaced also. And the slew is going to replace them both in the other, it's kind of a non-issue, there should be grade to be gained.
Yep.
By starting at the, at the south junction, south junction box and going to the highway.
Well, we don't even know if that old one's laid on grade or not.
Oh, we have no idea.
We have no idea.
I have a question, can I?
Yeah.
Who can request, I told Mike, like he was saying that.
Landowner, landowner petition.
So, so in this case, that's what you want to do, besides the water, you just move, you also wanna make your request for improvement? And the latest that from the time you did four years ago, that's my question.
My, my.
Okay, that, hold on, hold on.
I don't understand you that.
Okay, hold on a second, 'cause that would, that would throw a huge curve ball into everything that's been worked on for the last four years to do this repair project, their, their grant, all that stuff that's been applied for, is not anticipating that. So to do an improvement now, we would be starting over on, from scratch.
And what I requested, if, if they upgraded the size up to tile, the landowners would pick that up, so I thought that'd just kinda be an, an additional thing they would do, and the cost is there, the landowners would pick up that.
Well, that would.
That's what I, but it's been, like I said, you're right, it's probably four years ago.
That would have to be asked, because I, I don't know how that would work with their grant, so I'm not gonna say much there, but.
It's something we'd have to work with, I also talked with that about the same thing.
Yep.
Uh, if the landowners agree to help pay for, for a larger one, and for someday in the future, if going north and needs to be redone, so we could have a little more capacity if, if.
How deep are the tile up, where you're at?
They're going across the highway, they're probably down, I don't recall for sure, but we've got a boat, they're five foot deep.
Oh, five foot, so you got plenty, yeah.
Are you willing to get, do you have plenty, yeah, where you're at?
Uh, one part is still fairly deep, the, the mains are smaller.
Oh, okay.
They're fairly deep where we've dug up before.
Uh, but you're looking at getting a bigger main to add more to that.
Right, because that, that's probably the slowest, one of the slowest systems in the K- Kusuk Valley.
Yeah, oh, no.
Well, the comment by the engineer is saying that, is that all that whole system was laid pretty flat.
And, and part of the reason that it's so, the, the, so slow there is because the main tile that was put in is ninety percent blocked or better. I mean, so if, if you take, if you take the majority of the system or the main tile completely out of the equation, and then you also have restrictions on the relief tile, you don't have much left. So if, if you do just a repair, there would be a significant difference in water flow, um, just because of all the restrictions that are currently in place. So I'm sh- I have no doubt that it's very, very slow right now, but just doing a repair would be a significant difference of what you would see as water flow. I mean, I'm not saying improvement's not possible, but there's a lot of bugs to work through with that, so.
Thanks for the sponge.
And I think things are getting closer with, with the slew on their project, 'cause I stopped talking to guys who were, were digging, they're looking for, for the, they're looking for other tile to go into the main, so they know what they're gonna have to change or, or get up into the new main. The new main planning to go on a shorter route.
And they're, they're working to size that appropriately, yes.
Yes, they're gonna size it comparable of the two existing tile for flow. But at that point, like Rick says, and I say the same thing, if possible, we would like to increase that tile through there. So as, as time goes on, and if you're ever gonna have more drainage in art, then you're gonna have to work with the slew to run another tile that has bigger tiles in art, so it should be done now.
The challenge with that, that I would anticipate is if everything goes as ideally planned, um, they would be purchasing the materials, so for them to be able to purchase bigger sized materials, it potentially wouldn't apply or wouldn't conform with what they turned in for the grant application. So there's a lot of pieces of the puzzle there, it's been a lot of work to get to this point, so I don't know how that would play into the equation.
Something that needs to be discussed at the time, and we don't wanna wait until they have their tile laying in the field and say, hey, if it needs to be repaired, we need to be working with them before rather than later. And they've, they've agreed that it's a possibility, and I understand what you're saying, Kyle, with the grant, they may not be able to do anything any different, but it is. But I really don't see where going to a, a large diameter tile would affect that much, but they have so much money available to be applied.
What they did in lap four is they have a certain size, they just put the original pipe in, cost of the original pipe. And if you wanna upsize it, then they come to the farmers and say, okay, you're gonna pay for the upsides. And that's what we did on DD four lap four, we just, we did pay for the increase.
But was that a grant that they used?
Yeah, it was, it was no different than what they're doing.
Ducks Unlimited did it at the time.
Yep, yep, and that's what they're doing here. So I think it, it's workable, you know, and because it's gonna be four.
They're gonna have to agree with it before they start.
Yeah, that's right.
And, and that's where we've already.
If everything's all laid out and planned, well, before they, and all the tiles got there.
That's right. You gotta.
Styles there, it's not.
'Cause we met with the slew a couple of times, Danny Lapping, uh, on the site, and we just wanted, I don't, I don't know what to do, a half or three quarter, for DD four lap four, I think it's a half.
They did a half because they couldn't, they wouldn't grant three quarter at the time.
Right, well, see, uh, that drainage system was that made then before we improved that, so we up-sized it.
Which makes sense.
And you'll be surprised.
Yeah, yeah, yep, that's right. You have to order it.
Well, Joe, you're, you're gonna make a new request out?
Yeah, so I'm gonna do that.
And Rich, you gonna go to the refuge and talk to Ed? See if you have the possibility of grading that? I think it's up to the farmer.
I can do it again, but he's all, he told Rick, there's anything he told me, but.
I, I gotta go out there, I go out there.
I'll, I'll, I talked to him anyway, so I'll mention it to him and ask.
Well, I'd like it if the farmers would go out and ask and tell us, 'cause you're the ones that are gonna pay for it.
Right, you guys wanna go with me?
Well, there's, there's several others too, Rich and I are in agreement.
He knows that, and I talked to the.
Yeah, they've already.
I remember the guy's name, he was out there helping with the backhoe, and, and he, when I mentioned that again, he, he knew it, him and Ed had a talk.
We'll go out and remind him again.
We need to follow up on it, so by the time, I, hopefully we have that option.
Yeah, go out and remind him again.
Yeah, I'll stop and talk to him sometime.
Good, Ed's easy to get along with.
Yeah. No, they're, they're, they're hands are tied to what they can do, just like you guys, Kyle.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm just.
I appreciate all you guys' times and concerns.
We're not done.
You're not done?
Oh, we got DD four lap, I, I combined DD four lap two and lap four together. Is what I did, and I got a phone point for you guys. We got a brand new screener yesterday, we had a hard time, you guys are going, but we got. What'd you say?
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. I do wanna thank you guys for all the hard work you're doing, trying to do, it's not just fun what you do, but. Okay, let's go here. Okay, this is, you guys sent out a bill for DD four lap two and lap four, it's a pretty substantial amount, I think the combined amount is eight hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars in length. So I would just go on to, is what I did here, all I do is, is I, I'm, these first slides have your drainage assessment for the fall, and I use these figures off of that sheet in my analysis, so I'm just showing you that I got it, you know? There's a year progression. Uh, so now I did, did the analysis here, and you want me to wait till you get back?
I'll be right back.
All right, I'll just hold on. If you guys got any questions, feel free to, you know, uh, we'll wait until they can get back, he shouldn't hear this, if he, you wanna take a break, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm gonna take a two minute break, then he's gonna be gone, you're gonna wait.
Yeah, I'll wait, yeah. Yeah, I'm getting, getting, yeah. It don't hurt. It ain't over, huh?
Go calm down.
Okay. This is, I do have to leave about ten to twelve. Ten to twelve, a little bit, I gotta, you know, here's the deal. I just want you to see what I have, you know, yeah, I, I can slide through this pretty quickly. I just wanna let you know that in case I gotta go, ten, ten to, for sure, yeah.
There's another meeting lined up for this anyway, right?
Yeah, on the twenty ninth, if, if you're gonna object, you have to have your objections in honor before that, we need to. But at the time I put this request in, I didn't know if you guys were gonna have it in the finals, you know?
When can you object? Can you object now or?
Yeah, you can put it in.
You just gotta go over.
Yeah, you gotta put it right in, and then you'll be off there, yeah? Okay, ready to go?
Yep.
All right, guys, this, this anal- this, uh, this is the full assessment, analysis of, of those slides I showed you earlier, they were the full assessments that you guys put out every year. And what I did is these numbers are the numbers that are clear over on the left hand side, that the auditor always puts in as this is how much is left on the books. So if you go down through, like DD four lap two, that's, that's the left hand column. Uh, you can see where, uh, in two, twenty seventeen, they spread, uh, a million, a little over a million bucks, and then the property owners paid down a pile of it, and then we only had like two hundred and twenty, three hundred and thirty-two thousand left on it. You can see as the amount of years, they were dropping that amount. Until you hit twenty, twenty-one, twenty, twenty, they stay the same. So that indication to me is that nobody's paying on their, on their assessments. I don't know how that number can change, when it changes, then all the others, 'cause then all of a sudden it increases in twenty, twenty-three. The same happens in DD four lap four in the year of twenty twenty, from that point on, it don't change. It actually increases in twenty, twenty-three, it's an I, it's, it's I. So I, does anybody wanna comment on this, or I'll just keep going, okay, I'm just gonna keep going. So now the treasure spreads versus the auditor's statements, okay, here's what I did. I looked at what they spread on the treasures on DD four lap two, so I went to NIX Records, and that top figure of a million, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, what he spread to us, the auditor, when the statement came out on twelve, twenty and sixteen, was a million and whatever, eleven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars, which there was an overspread of a hundred and twenty-one thousand on the DD four lap two project. So, and then we do the same thing in DD four lap four. Uh, the treasurer's spread, uh, two, two million, four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars, and the auditor's bill statement came out with two million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, three ninety-five, for a difference of two hundred and four thousand. So now I go to the treasurer's books, this is what the treasurer's books look like, and I, and I, I only got them up till twenty, twenty-two, I got, I got them last year. And so I went to this fund balance, and interest paid to date on the warrants that have been paid is a hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and fifteen bucks for DD four lap two. The capital left to pay according to the treasurer on DD four lap two is a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Now, at the very beginning of the project, the property owners paid cash of five hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars and ten cents, which left five hundred and ninety-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents on the waiver. This is all the treasurer's books. So now we go to DD four lap four, and you're gonna see the same thing here, and those are the figures, four fifty-four, two twenty, was the interest that we've paid so far. Uh, the capital left on the project is four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty bucks. The owners paid cash in twenty seventeen, a million, four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars, and, uh, we waived one million and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and ten bucks. So here were the warrants that were paid. Uh, these, these are in NIX Records, the treasurer's records. And on DD four lap two, you can see where we paid Rysol, nine hundred and three thousand, we paid McClure Engineering, eighty thousand, we paid legal notices of twenty-two hundred bucks, we paid prop damage of a hundred and forty-six thousand, which the total comes to a million, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and forty-nine cents, which, um, if, if you go by the auditor's statement that they sent out, this is a twelve percent over run, that, that, that cost of the project was less than this. And I, and you can see on DD four lap four, it's the same thing. You see where we paid Rysol, McClure, legal notices, prop damage, and then you come up with a two million, four hundred and ninety-nine, eight oh seven, and that's a nine percent over. Those warrants all include an overcharged percentage of that percent. And that was the difference between the auditor's notice that we got on both these projects versus this. And I kinda remember Marge telling me, 'cause I jumped her on DD four lap forty, and you said it was kind of a common practice on a few big projects, you just charge an extra nine or ten percent to cover anything that you might miss. I remember talking to you, you remember that? You know, and that's okay, you don't, that's.
Not just a repair balance, yeah.
Right, you know, and that's fine, you know, I mean, you know, I don't have a problem with that. Okay, here's, here's the deal, we have the treasurer's books on the left and the auditor's books on the right. So the treasurer book, books is shown on DD four lap two, that we only have about a hundred and seventy-five thousand left to pay on that project. And the auditor's book says we have two hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty-nine cents. You go to DD four lap four, they save, the treasurer's books looks like we only have four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-two cents, but the auditor's saying we have six hundred and fourteen thousand and twenty-five dollars left to pay on. So those books are not matching. So I put in a request on August second, that's what this is, and you can see DD four lap two and DD four lap four, and I, you're, you're charging an additional amount of two hundred and fifty thousand on lap two and six hundred and fourteen thousand on lap four. Okay, I requested the vouchers, engineering reports and all other related material that generated the spreads on the following districts. So, Marge, you emailed, and I appreciate all the records you've gotten over the years, Marge. Don't take this as a slight, I'm just showing what I got, okay? And I appreciate what you've done, thank you. So. And I appreciate what you've done, thank you. So what Marge tells me is that I'll receive the notice for the hearing for August twenty ninth of twenty twenty-two. Well, I got those notices. But there's no information on those notices. I mean, it shows what I gotta pay, you know what I mean, and that's fine. But that's not the information that supports the additional six hundred and fourteen thousand or the two hundred and fifty thousand that you're expecting the district to pay there, and that's all I'm gonna say on that. So in my opinion, I've got zero record to support here that the board's, uh, spread, okay? I don't have any information on that. And these are the people that are responsible for the spreads on DD four lap two and lap four. I looked it up, you guys all wrote through the spread back in May, okay? And here's the deal, this this kinda is getting into some, some stuff. On DD four lap two, you guys have an opportunity to reduce our bill a little bit. Yeah, I think this project here, this particular one was a FEMA deal. And, uh, a request was made, we have FEMA funds in the bank. Here's the repair request that Roger did to put it in, that's just another repair request. But anyway, here's an email to the state FEMA from Marge to the state FEMA requesting to defund Public Works Project Three Thirty-Five, which we had money in the bank for DD four lap two. And the only people that Marge copied in was Roger Jarks and Kyle Stecker, if you look real close at that. So then they come down here, and the decision to return the funds is already made by Roger Jarks and Kyle Stecker, and then the three other supervisors at the meeting of January twenty twenty-three, they they voted, uh, send the funds back. And I know Josh Walker asked about the sixty-one thousand, you, do you remember that? And that's why I have to look at this a little closer. So we had money to help reduce the bill, but you're now sending, and you send it back. And here's the deal, this is the last slide, Jack, so you don't have to worry, you're gonna be channeled plenty of time. Yeah, I'm being fast. Okay, you know, this is a false, what does this have to do with anything? Well, if you go down to main twenty, uh, on fund number fifty-one zero ninety-nine, it says you're gonna assess fifty-one zero ninety-nine. Now, that's funny, what that means, that's a particular area in a district. And then you're gonna transfer those funds to deficits in two different funds, which is fifty-one one oh three and fifty-one one oh four. And you do the same thing to fund number fifty-one six forty-two. Now, the problem with this is, is every one of those funds is a separate trust. And every one of those funds have a separate classification standard. So basically, you've billed somebody else to put money in a different district. You you billed the wrong land, what is it, AMI, you know, it's just something I saw. So I'm like thinking, I don't think DD four lap two is short of funds. Here's another deal. We have a repair request, okay? Roger signed it, that's okay, that's great, okay? And then here's the, here's Rysol's bill, which is okay, it's on grant twenty-nine two. Now we come down to the voucher, and here's what I want you to notice. The auditor um, the auditor drew two warrants on this bill, it's for a thousand and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. She drew two warrants, and when you go to the next records, there's only one warrant present for that bill. So, uh, I don't know what you're doing with all these warrants, this is just one example of many I've found in my own bills. You know what I mean? You draw two warrants, you only needed one to cover it, and the first one's never in NIX records. This is just an example I put up here for you guys to know, this is what I'm seeing. So I think you guys better be thinking about that spread that you think you're just gonna take a bunch of money on, because I think everything's paid. Marge?
So just to answer that first question with two warrants, warrants are issued, if there's funds in the fund, it'll issue whatever is there. So that creates one warrant, and if there's not funds, then it's a stamp warrant. That list that you had was a list of the stamp warrants that didn't have funds.
Okay, so that, that what you have in.
That's what you're, that's what you're.
I see.
Was stamp warrants. So if it had cash to pay.
Right.
There it, it's not gonna be your stamp warrant.
I see.
And the difference between the treasurer's report and the auditor's report is interest.
Interest is.
The treasurer's report has a principal, and the auditor's balance has interest.
Yeah, but in the treasurer's report, it's showing where we've paid interest on all the warrants up to date. And we don't, but people holding onto the warrants that wait will pay the next warrants off with interest. So I don't see where you can recharge an interest, because the interest is already being paid by the people that are holding.
Right.
Or wait the bill. And when you take, just just simple math now, but if you take that six hundred and fourteen thousand on DD four lap four, and the interest rate on those warrants are six percent, and you take that interest that you're charging, you divide it by six percent, that gives you the principal that you drew the interest off, well, that's ten million dollars. I find that a little hard to believe. Now, you can do a present value thing, and and I did that, but I didn't wanna confuse everybody here. You know, we we didn't have that much. If you just took one, everybody paid off and and use that figure, it doesn't even come full to six hundred thousand. I don't know where you're telling us that interest figure. There is no way, there's six hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in interest on that project, no way.
It's what is paid. So as the money is paid in, it it applies to each warrant as it was issued. It'll pay the principal and the interest, it's not just one or the other, it's combined. So it's all combined up to that point. So there's a balance of warrants, principal, and interest combined to equal this six hundred and fourteen.
Next book shows, well, I think on the total interest paid on that, it was in the slide, but there was a, we've already paid on the fourth time, there was the interest or something like that. The interest is paid by the, the waiver, the guy that waived his project. It's paid annually. And they got till twenty thirty-seven to pick this bill up. It's almost like you got an acceleration clause in this contract somewhere. Why does somebody like Bob, that, or myself, that paid for everything, have to pay any interest? We paid all of it, bro.
You're still gonna have to pay interest, because the project, until it's completed, you're paying interest, you're still paying interest.
Calculations that were done at the time when it was issued that didn't include um, portions that we weren't aware of, and then once we found them, then that's when.
Well, that's the evidence I want. I'm not gonna believe there's six hundred and fourteen thousand or you're two hundred and fifty thousand, I want the supporting evidence, the supporting, the underlying figures that gets you to that figure. And I haven't received that, alls I get is that, oh, hey, you gotta pay six hundred and fourteen thousand.
Right, that's why, that's why we have a hearing to explain that to everyone at the same time.
Are you gonna have a spreadsheet while you can see it?
Why can't we have that information before we go?
I have, I think long, so I haven't been able to put that together. But I'm working on that.
But I understand that it has a rear hearing, and we have not settled the information. We're gonna have to put, I don't know the term, I'm not in art, okay? But I have to accept whatever you decide, you don't have the chance to check my numbers. That's the purpose of this hearing, otherwise we prefer to receive it earlier, so we can make our personal analysis and see if we agree what you guys decide, because we need to know.
And you decided this way back in May.
I dented, dented gravity is zero, that balance is shitty. Here is no difference. We are not against paying, but we need to know what we are paying. Right, Bob? That's the only question we are asking here. I'm not against any number, but we have the right to know where they come from. That's the only respect. I I I'm never keen to this, okay? I'm his wife. I don't like this, I'm a wife like you and Marge, but when it gets in the fog, so I don't have my protection. Uh, on the eighty-four thousand two that you guys sent me, I have to come and ask you. I can pay two years' college off my daughter with that. I can buy a car for you and me as lives. So, well, I can buy a farm, don't they? So I have the right to know. So I don't know what is hearing, Kyle, I'm very sincere to you. But if hearing decides for me, and I don't have time to look what you come up with that number, I think we deserve that respect. Try the wrong people, give me your opinion, but I think we deserve that respect. We're not against what you guys do, that's why we voted for you. But we have the right to see what you're talking, and I don't trust you or Marge. That's not the goal. The goal is finding the job, the top of it, the bottom of it. There is an individual case by far. But we need to have this respect, please, we're done. We vote respect, that's all I ask for the holy board and for the altar. Because I do books, I'm an accountant, not from here, who can dented gravity, balance is shit is zero. So if there's a cost, I just wanna know where it's coming from. I will pay, but we don't deny, I don't have that to do with our system here. We like what we have. And that's, the word says, to Caesar what is to Caesar, I'm hard, but I need to know where and paying and why I pay. And we don't, we don't feel good with this resistance of information that makes us come here and raise against you, because you don't give the information. And we have the right, that's the only simple thing I would like to give to you all. Okay? So if the hearing twenty-nine, I'm gonna be here, I don't never see hearing. But if I get here, I get a spreadsheet, you set these things, you make the decision, and we have no time to figure out what you did.
Anything else, Joe?
That's it, bud.
If that's it, do I have a motion to adjourn today?
Okay, hold on.
I'll second.
Do you make the motion?
Carter.
Kyle, second. I have a motion to second and adjourn, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Post, motion carried.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you today.
Thank you, Kyle.
Yep.
My cute friend, I love it, it's great. My Mr. Johnson. I'm sorry, I don't wanna love friends, you guys, you know, Marge.
No, no, I know, but we were not intentionally.
But you understand, you know, but that, it's just that the image passes, I don't want that, I know that numbers match.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're not trying to.
You know?
No, I know, I know. No, it's the one.
You heard anything about the grammar yet? What's that?
Yeah, but I just want to tell this, Andrew.
All right, ready to go on my way, it's a birthday.
So yeah.
Yes, yes.
Between ourselves.
What are our persons?
Yeah, so you know what I mean. So don't take it as a personal. Thank you, Mr. George.